I would like to advise that our meetings are recorded and livestreamed on our YouTube channel and saved for viewers to watch at a later time if they so choose. I believe we have some students joining us to do our land acknowledgement. At this time, I would ask them, just one person? Good. So if you don't mind introducing yourself and telling where school you go to in your grade, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
My name is Samantha. I come from the Central Middle School and I'm in grade six. Red Deer Public Schools acknowledges Treaty Six Territory to the north of the Red Deer River. Treaty Six Territory is the ancestral and traditional territory of the Cree, Dene, Blackfoot, Salto, and Nakota Sioux. We also acknowledge the Treaty Seven Territory to the south of the Red Deer River. Treaty Seven Territory is the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Gaiwina, Kikini, Tsuxica, as well as the Zutana First Nation and Stowee Nakota First Nation. We acknowledge the land that Red Deer is now on is also the traditional territory of the Métis and we are part of Region Three with Métis Nation of Alberta. We acknowledge all the many First Nations, Métis, and Inuit whose footsteps have marked these lands for centuries. We are grateful for elders and traditional knowledge keepers who are still with us today and those who have gone before. Recognizing and acknowledging the traditional land is an act of reconciliation and a show of gratitude to those whose territory we reside on.
Thank you so very much. At this time, I would ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem, "Canada." Next, I would like to give tribute to the memory of longtime-serving trustee Dr. Bill Stubing. We are deeply saddened by the passing of longtime trustee Dr. Bill Stubing at eighty-one years old. Bill served our division for twenty-six years with unwavering dedication, thoughtful leadership, and a genuine commitment to students, families, and public education. During his many years on the board, Bill was known for his quiet strength, steady perspective, and his belief that every decision must put students first. He brought wisdom, integrity, and heart to every table he sat at, whether advocating for strong learning opportunities, supporting schools through change, or celebrating the achievements of students and staff. Bill's presence made a meaningful and lasting impact. Bill, who was also a longstanding sociology professor, was respected by colleagues across the province and cherished by those who had the privilege of working alongside him. His legacy is reflected in the countless students' lives who were touched by the initiatives he supported, the staff he encouraged, and the division he helped strengthen. Bill's impact extends beyond his local community as evidenced by his eight-year tenure on the Public School Boards Association of Alberta, the Executive Committee. Serving as a director, second vice president, and first vice president, Bill played a key role in shaping PSBA's foundational principles, advocating for reasonable local autonomy, inclusion, and civil democracy. In two thousand and twenty-four, Bill was honored with the Dick Baker Legacy Award by PSBA. The award is given to recognize the significant contributions of public school trustees, administrators, and members of the greater community whose efforts further reflect the promotion of and support for public school education. Bill was chosen because he has modeled the values of integrity, compassion, respect, mentorship, and leadership, leaving a lasting and positive legacy for those who follow. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire Red Deer Public Schools community, we extend our deepest condolences to Bill's family, friends, and all who mourn his loss. We are grateful for his service, his leadership, and the profound contributions he made to public education. His legacy will continue to guide and inspire us. And at this time, I would like to take a moment of silence for Dr. Bill Stubing. Thank you. In front of you, you have the meeting minutes from November twelfth. Are there any errors, changes, or missions, Trustee Summers?
There's a motion of my boarder, Trustee Waters' motion to rescind and redo the vice chair election. No, it wasn't. It wasn't put in.
Like the order?
Called, right, by you?
Yes. Under ten point one?
Ten point one.
We can add that change. As well, motion to meet in private, free. Motion by Trustee Waters, individuals were Chair Buchanan, Vice Chair Summers was absent during that motion. That should be removed. Any other errors, missions, changes? Seeing none, I look for a motion to receive these minutes amended. Dr. See Summers, all in favor? Carried. We also have the meeting minutes from November twenty-seventh. Are there any errors or missions changes? Seeing none, I look for a motion. All those in favor? Carried. In front of you, you have your agenda. Are there any additions, changes need to be made? There are none. I look for a motion. Trustee Barrett Smith, all those in favor? Next, we will move on to nine point one, Central Alberta Child Advocacy Friends and Education Award. On behalf of Red Deer Public School Division, it is my honor to speak about why we nominated the Central Alberta Child Advocacy Center for the Alberta School Boards Association Friends of Education Award, and why we cannot be more proud that they have been selected as the Zone Four recipient. The true meaning of bravery is found when a child or youth seeks help to escape abuse, trauma, or exploitation. In those moments, the C A C A C is there, not just for their immediate safety and wellbeing, but for their healing. The Central Alberta Child Advocacy Center is far more than an organization. It is a lifeline. It is a partner, and for so many students and families across our region, it has become a place of hope. As a nonprofit working alongside the R C M P, Alberta Health Services, Alberta Education, Alberta Justice, Children's Services, and multiple community agencies, the C A C A has built a model of care that is simply unmatched. They operate at the intersection of safety, healing, education, mental health, and community care, and they do it with compassion, excellence, and unwavering commitment. This is why we nominated them. Their partnership with schools is transformative. Through trauma-informed education, school presentations, preventative prevention programs, parent sessions, and frontline intervention, the C A C A C helps us ensure our students are safe, supported, and able to learn. When children experience trauma, their ability to focus, build relationships, and engage in school is deeply impacted. The C A C A C changes that trajectory. They walk beside students through crisis, support families in their most difficult moments, and work closely with educators to understand what a child needs to begin healing. They do not simply respond to trauma. They change the lives because of how they respond. Their expertise strengthens our entire community. The C A C has led groundbreaking work in trauma-informed best practices, child protection collaboration, and multidisciplinary approaches that bring education, law enforcement, healthcare, and social services together in a way that truly puts the child first. They train teachers. They equip administrators. They empower families, and they help us create safer, stronger learning environments across every school in our division. And most importantly, they restore hope. For a child who has experienced trauma, hope is not an abstract idea. It is a necessity. It is what allows them to heal, to trust again, and to reclaim their future. The C A C gives our students that hope. We could not be more proud of this recognition. Winning the Alberta School Boards Association's Friends of Education Award for Zone Four is not just an acknowledgement of the center's work. It is acknowledgement of their heart, their commitment to children, their deep respect for families, and their powerful belief that every young person deserves safety, dignity, and a chance to thrive. As a school division, we are grateful. As a community, we are strengthened. And as partners in the wellbeing of children, we are inspired every day by the work of the Central Alberta Child Advocacy Center. To the entire C A C team, congratulations. You have earned this honor, and our gratitude runs deeper than words. Thank you for standing with our students. Thank you for supporting our schools. And thank you for making Central Alberta a safer, more compassionate place for every child. We are incredibly proud of you today and every day. And I think that it is important to note that several of the individuals who are with the Child Advocacy Center are past employees of Red Deer Public School Division. And I think that that is really, really, it speaks to how profound education goes into all aspects of community. And at this time, I would like to welcome Mark Jones.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, David.
So this for the kids back there and parents that are here and the board. We were thrilled to get the nomination, to be recognized for what I look as being groundbreaking work where we look at our center and its intervention. Things have already happened to kids and families, but to be able to put prevention piece to it. We didn't have to go much farther than come to Red Deer Public to say, hey, would you support this? And since day one, they've supported everything that we wanted to do. And you can see six of the seven of us here, our former Red Deer Public employees, and Lee worked for Red Deer Catholic. We just had to kind of show them how we're going to do it. But it's that prevention piece that's been put in. And that's, that's, it's the educators and it's the EAs and it's the support staff. It's the caretakers, the kids are talking to, we're giving them the tools necessary to be able to say what they need to do with the information they have. And Cam and Cindy's newest thing on that child exploitation, human trafficking, is going, has been unbelievably well received. And I'll say, the first district that we have done that went to Red Deer Public. And it's, we're, Cam and their book now well into January already with schools. And it's an exciting thing. It's exciting to see kids come and talk about it and recognize that they do have friends that are potentially in that child exploitation world. And that's, that's that gift because people don't think it's in our communities, and it's in every community. And I couldn't be more proud of the group that are here and the work that they're putting to make this happen. And we'll celebrate with you all today that starting in September, there will be a continuous ed at Red Deer Polytech of all of the work that they've put together, the modules, to be able to get certificates out in the system for people to be able to do that. So that's a tremendous amount of work that they put into creating those modules and creating the classwork. It's the first of its kind in Canada, and we're very proud of the work that our team has done. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Dean and Nicole and Lee and Cindy and Cam and Rob, your work that you do is life-altering for so many people and so many kids and educators. And I thank you on behalf of them, and I thank you on behalf of all the kids and families that you've recognized the work that's happened. It's important work, and it's tremendous to be able to do the work. So thanks for giving the honor.
And I will present you a bell and we'll go get pictures, but at this time, first, I'd like to open up the floor to trustees.
I don't want to say anything more really than what Chair Buchanan said. You guys are worth your weight in gold. I do remember years ago when this was just, just a dream, right, Mark? And all of the, all the hard work that you did and used all your connections to not only bring it into Red Deer for a few little, you know, apartment-sized boardrooms, and then getting a connection with Red Deer Polytech and building that magnificent building. Thank you. I am always saddened that this is needed, but I am no longer saddened when I know that there are ways to take care of these problems that are in our society. And the prevention just excites me because I'd rather be a more proactive society than a reactive society. And I think you are sending us there. And again, my sincere gratitude, and keep up the good work.
Trustee Waters?
Mr. Jones, I can't, I can't even say much more than what I said except, well. Any organization has to have a good leadership, and it starts with you. You've been there. You know what it's been. You get your hands dirty, but you also show the people you're there to help them. And again, to everyone there, if it wasn't for you or these kids being. So thank you very much for that and for the students and the parents. Thank you.
Trustee Barrett Smith?
As a new trustee, I've only been able to go to one of your presentations, but it was incredibly profound and hit home really hard for me. And I have been doing it for years ever since. So even just after a very short experience with you guys, I see how incredibly valuable you are. Thank you.
Trustee Summers?
Really excited about those modules and that this is going to now spread throughout the education system. And I'm asking for the great.
As it was said, it's extremely sad and unfortunate that we require facilities like this, but grateful that we have it. And I don't think words really go to, can speak to the appreciation for everything that you guys do for our families and our kids. So thank you so, so very much. The passion that you have for the Child Advocacy Center is unmatched. And yeah, I, because I said I'm unfortunate, but grateful for it. And at this time, we have a bell. Would you like to introduce all of the individuals who you have?
You bet. So well, for those who don't know, Dean Pazia, former teacher and administrator in Red Deer Public, retired at West Park Middle School after having, getting a chance to put that school together. Dean, I'll share with you, Dean dealt with one of the most difficult cases that we ever had in our early stages and did an unbelievable job, as did the whole system. But that case in particular helped us leapfrog to know what to do and put safeguards in for other schools to know how to do that. Nicole Jones runs our Climb and Tree Mentorship Program, the CLIMB and the ASSENT, our children's conferences that we have directly benefit. The CLIMB is grade nine to twelve, most vulnerable kids in Central Alberta, recommended by their, their teachers and their counselors, as well as the ASSENT, which is our brand new one that we had to postpone because of, apparently there was a labor issue earlier this year. So we postponed it and it's happening in, in January, sorry, February, February fourth. And that's for grade seven and eight boys. And that one is just being housed with Red Deer's kids in grade seven, eight, so that we can springboard it. So our girls' climb conference started with eighty-five girls, turned out three hundred and ten. And the boys' conference, we're linking it up to eighty-five, and then that one we hold to build up to three hundred. Lee works direct partnership with Lee Kane, with Dean. They do all of our trauma, what to do if you suspect abuse, and they're four and seven. And they, they're the first ones that are ready to have their modules going. Cam and Cindy are right behind them. Lee, Cindy, also Matheson, Red Deer Public, Cam, Red Deer Public, they're our child exploitation, human trafficking educators. And Rob, Moltzam, many of you, he just got out of here a couple of years ago, and we wrapped him, snapped him up too. Does all of our connections with Red Deer Polytech and does a little bit of work on the research side, but he does instrumental for our learning series, as well as our Transforming Practices Conference that comes up in May, which is, this year is, we've got some speakers coming from world-renowned speakers. We're really excited about it. Probably support. You should maybe think about sending twenty or thirty speakers. Is that your budget? Throw it up there. Forty, maybe fifty.
I think that they are.
If there's any tickets left. Yes. We're down to our last fifty tickets. You guys won. But it's a team like this that makes things happen. And one of our team that's down here is Ronnie Galitski. She is, does the medical side of it. And Ronnie, last week, I know, had hosted four hundred and fifty, whether they were police, nurses, social workers through all over Alberta on a Zoom three-hour talk that she did, all about the child exploitation, human trafficking from the medical side, and looking at that screening tool that we have right now, just trying to get authenticated. And once it does, we can get it into Connect Care, right directly with Alberta Health Service. And that's the whole thing of the team is all the stuff we're trying to do is connect it all through the higher-up systems. The ministry's doing that so that we can continue to get the work out there because it's, it's noble work they do, and they've done an unbelievable job putting stuff together in a real short period of time. And it is amazing. I always know when people retire, retiring in their next two or three years from Red Deer Public, because they all say, you got a job for me. And if you're going to have an education program and you're going to do stuff, you're the best people to have because they know how to do it and what to do and get out there and use the contacts. So we appreciate it. It's been, it's been a lot of fun. We've all got probably about six or seven more years that we'll retire as a father.
It's no secret that the profession of education is difficult, but for individuals who then retire and go into a new profession of dealing with children who have experienced the unthinkable trauma that no child should ever have to experience, it says a lot about all of you. And I just want to say truly how grateful we are to have this partnership with the Child Advocacy Center of Alberta. Thank you. And that. We will go for a picture.
Well, we're all going to go get our tickets. We are?
We are.
Come on, we're so excited for the rest of the evening. Oh, Chad, one of the, you should get that door. Thanks for your input, always.
We got fifty tickets to buy.
That's it.
We got the first two hundred. Go do the tickets.
Sorry, as I reach over you. There you go.
Christine, Cindy.
Cindy, yes.
And how many do we have more this year?
There's fifty-seven of us total. So we have forty-four students, four teachers from the district, and then nine chaplains.
Just give me a standing one in the creek.
All right. Moving along on our agenda to ten point one, enrollment summary report. Dr. Louise Lauer?
Very much. Be prepared to be dazzled here with this excellent report. Don't don't stand up just yet.
Let us know.
So good news to report here. Looks like we, unlike last month where we saw a decrease in our student enrollment, in the, by the end of the month of November, we've got some stability and we're relatively stable. We saw our high schools, social high schools decline, but that was matched by an increase in enrollment at our Pines Alternative School Center. Our preschool, our pre-K and our mid-school losses were offset by ECS and elementary gains. And so when you see an increase from eleven hundred, sorry, eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-six at the end of October to eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two, is a net gain of thirty-six students. But if you take a look, twenty-nine of those are North Cottage students, which, you know, at this time of year would be a number of our adult learners and things that are taking one or two courses. So I think overall, we're just, we're not losing students, but we're kind of static, which is, you know, as we move forward. So I submit that as our enrollment summary. Any questions?
Seeing none, we will accept that report as information. Thank you so very much. Dr. Louise Lauer. Moving on to ten point two, Ultimate Steams Trip Report. Superintendent Erickson?
Yeah, it's my pleasure to introduce a couple of our teachers, Christina Clark and Sidney Nygum, who are here to present to us on the Ultimate Steams Trip. And I'm going to let them introduce the two students that they brought with them. Just a bit of history on this. The Ultimate Science Trip has been offered since nineteen ninety-eight, and over the time that it's been happening, we've had one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three students, chaperones, and teachers that have participated in the Ultimate Science Trip. So, but why Christina and Sidney are here today is they've been the driving force behind re-envisioning what that trip looks like. Because over time, things change, and you need to have a different vision for what that trip looks like. And we're very excited to have them here. Our board, I know, historically has asked, we approve these trips, but then we don't often get to hear about what that trip was and what it went like for our students. So we're very fortunate to have the four individuals here today to share that story with us. So I'd invite all of you to come up, please.
Would you like us to stand? Okay, Red Deer. Okay. Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, yes. So I am Christina Clark, and I currently is at Physical Literacy Specialist and Actuology.
And I'm Sidney Nygum. I'm a teacher right next door. I'm from the school.
I'm Mackenzie Clark. I'm in grade eleven at MacIntyre High School.
My name is Merrick Machuski. I'm doing the Gerber programs with Gateway and Gerber, and I'm in grade five.
So just to kind of give you a little gist of our little presentation here today, Sidney and I are going to give you an overview of the trip. Mackenzie went on U S T twenty twenty-three, and she'll talk about her trip. Merrick went in twenty twenty-five, so he went just this past April. We went together. And then we have a few students' work that they've done, pre-trip research that we'll share with you as well. So, yeah. So we wanted to start telling you about the purpose of the trip. And I know that when you get the like big proposal, like four big proposal for you to read through in a couple of months, it'll all be in there. But just to summarize it, we really, our vision is to expose middle school students to international travel and not just like, hey, you're now in Florida. We do it in a very safe and controlled environment. And Sidney's going to talk about our groups in a couple of minutes. We also want middle school students to make connections with other middle school students. So we're really proud this year that we have students from grade eight in every middle school in Red Deer Public going on the trip. So first of So first of all, that's awesome that we're able to diversify. But second of all, now they go to, and these guys are both going to talk about that, they go to high school and they automatically know people. So it's so great to know new people when you go to your high school. Also, we, we're going to talk a lot about our curriculum outcomes. It is such an experience to be able to live those curricular outcomes in your life. So you learn about how airplanes fly and then you actually get to go on one or see an airplane fly. Also, we want the students to have fun because for this one. So a little bit of our student selection process, since we have kids applying from every single public school in grades across our year, typically we receive between 150 and 200 applications each year. So because of having a pretty extensive application process to help us choose students who are deserving and would benefit from the trip, students receive an application from a teacher via their school, which asks them things like travel history, how many times have they been on an airplane? And then once they fill that out, there's also a parent portion that parents can fill out, asking them why do they think their children would benefit from the trip? One thing that lots of parents will say is that they wouldn't be able to afford a trip like this as a family, but through the fundraising that they offer, it's something that's possible for their children. Next, they get teacher evaluation forms. So students are given three of these. They choose three teachers at their school who fill out these forms. And essentially the teachers will rank things like resiliency from one to 10, cooperation from one to 10. We never ask what students' grades are, so we have no interest in what their marks are. They're all students. We're looking for kids who have a positive attitude towards learning and would really benefit from a trip like this. Next point, we have a waiting list also. So if students who are chosen in our first 44 group cannot attend the trip for any reason, they're put on a waitlist. Once students drop out, we've had kids all of a sudden mid-year move to Calgary. So that being said, they cannot go on this trip anymore. They now live in Calgary. We're able to refund their money through our group and get in new students. So we look at our waiting list and choose students who are willing to fill that slot. Yeah. Okay, so if you want to scan the keyword code, sorry, I should have said that a minute ago. This takes us to the website that we've made for our trip. Once you're on the website, I'll just give you a quick little tour of the site. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
As you can see, I have, we have a calendar, what events are coming up for us. We have a link to fundraising and actually Chair Ruby Cannon started this for us. There's a link here for a WhatsApp app and in the WhatsApp app, there's one that's for bottle drive and there's one for fundraising. So parents can opt in or out of whatever fundraising they choose to do. There's a little bit of chaperone info. Our chaperones are really like amazing. They do so much work to make this trip happen along with us. So right now, all we have in here is a little guide to all of the rides that you can, places to eat and Disney. We have a bottle drive link. We do lots of bottle drives. Mackenzie's going to talk about the bottle drives section, but there is a flyer that you can send out. And we also have just a little club for my friend Ternish in the Delaware Bottle Depot. He actually comes to our house and picks up the bottles. I just like text him. He's like, I'll be there Tuesday at 10:00. Sends me the transfer. So I promote that with everybody because he's awesome. We have our neighborhood maps and then we have a directory where everyone can put in, oh, I'm this kid. I went to this block on this day so that we don't overlap too much. What I really would like to highlight today is here, you can see for each day of the trip. So day one of the trip is not just a travel date. You can see at the top, we have our STEAMS question of the day. So we've rebranded the trip from Ultimate Science Trip to Ultimate STEAMS Trip. So STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, Math and Social Studies. So we're not just getting science curriculum outcomes anymore. We're getting everything you can possibly imagine and you'll see that in one of other presentations. So the STEAM on the first day, although the detail today and quickly on the other ones. Identify three characteristics of an aircraft that allow it to fly. You learn that in Science 6 and then we actually get to experience riding on an airplane, seeing it fly, seeing it up close. The specific task, take pictures and videos of your aircraft airport, taking off, landing, as well as when we're in there. And then this is great for the parents that aren't on the trip and for the students. It's kind of like a detailed, this is subject to change. This is a detailed list of what we do. We meet at West Park in the morning. We get on the coach bus. We go to the airport. On the bus, we'll remind the kids again, hey, remember what's appropriate in security? What's appropriate in customs? What's appropriate when you're at the airport? We actually fly. Then when we're in Florida, we go for dinner. We're going to Tarvin this year because who doesn't want to see all the things that you can actually see on TikTok, actually Tarvin? And then we check into our hotel. We are very firm curfew of 10 o'clock. The kids are in bed at 10:00. We pay for security. So I check in with security. These are our rooms. Security is there until 5:00 AM, making sure that no one's leaving their rooms. And then the chaperones have a meeting every night. So every night, the teachers meet the chaperones, how was your day? Any concerns? Anything that we need to know about? So that's kind of like a detailed date. Right now, our itinerary for this year, day two, we go to Magic Kingdom. You can see our STEAMS question of the day, talking about wait times. The specific task, we get kids to actually time how long they wait in line. Doesn't match the number. Talk to a cast member. All of our groups last year did and the cast members at Disney like, oh, this is how it works. And they do face recognition and they do this and this. And it was super cool to learn it. Day three, right now. Day three is such a fun day that the kids don't even know it's going to be so much fun beforehand. We go to NASA and we learn lots about space, rockets, Canada hand and the Canada arm, which was actually developed by someone that went to Gerber. So it's really fun to get the kids to recognize that when we're there. Then we go on an airboat ride and see alligators, which is so cool to see the natural environment in Florida. And then, yeah, super cool. And then we go to Cocoa Beach if the weather allows us to. So it's fun for the kids to, you're at the Atlantic Ocean, like, could you put in? Right? Some kids never get to experience that.
We don't want to talk alligators with our insurance tag over there.
Oh, yeah, we're in the boat. They're not waiting. Yeah. Day four, we go to Bush Gardens and Bush Gardens is more than just an amusement park, although there are some like wild roller coasters there. One has a, what is it, 89 degree drop on the roller coaster? I did it once. I won't do it again. It's too scary. But the other half of it is, it's like a zoo, basically. We go on a safari and they draft. It's so cool to experience that. So they get to learn a lot about animals and go on some really cool rides at Bush Gardens. It's about, this is a good, it's about a 90 minute drive from, to Tampa Bay from Orlando. So it's a nice quiet time that morning. The kids can have an extra nap on the bus on the way there and the way back. And we're talking more about that built, what we built into the trip there too. Okay, this is another great day. Hollywood Studios at Disney. We actually get to go to a Disney school. We do the physics at Disney workshop. And I did it when I met with, as a chaperone in 2023. And it's amazing. The stuff they teach you, how it used to be gears for roller coasters and now it's magnets and how the magnets are different and better. And they explain how they, you know, the physics behind how the rides work. They also talked about how every Disney ride is an experience. You're not just riding a ride from the costumes and the accents and all the things. That's very cool. And there's also an evening show there that we tried to do and the time works out fantastic. Day six, SeaWorld. At SeaWorld, we do a behind the scenes animal rescue center tour. So we actually had to go behind the big wall that they have and go to the back and see, they rescued this turtle. How are they helping that turtle? They rescued these fishes. What else did you see rescued there last time? I think that might be it. Yeah, so they actually, we go back and see what they're doing it, what they're doing and how they're doing it. We also, there is rides still at SeaWorld. Everybody likes the rides. There's a cool one where you like stand up like you're on a surfboard. It's very cool. And we also look at the show, we watch the shows. So there's the dolphin show and there's the orca show, which isn't just animals doing tricks. They're explaining to us how their environment has changed and how they're saving them here at SeaWorld. And the last day, the travel home day, we pack as much in as we can. We go to Epcot in the morning. And the kids love Epcot. They want to go to all 11 countries in the world showcase. And they want to eat the food and they want to, the ones that are in French immersion want to go to France and they want to practice using your French with all the people. Because at the pavilion, you can only work there if you're actually from a country. So at the France pavilion, everyone is from France. They all speak French. So the French immersion kids are usually quite excited to go and try out their French when they order their foods. Okay, that's it for Laura. Side note off of that, last year I had two French immersion girls in my group and two non-French immersion girls. As soon as we entered France land, they refused to speak English to anyone. We're only speaking French, so it was just awesome to see. A little bit about our safety supervision. We have a one to four adult to student ratio. So once students are selected for the trip, we group them with three other kids who have commonalities, common interests, kids that they would have a good time with in Florida and get along with. We aim to get students from different schools in each group. So usually we'll pair them up with a friend in their school, somebody they already know, somebody they're familiar with, and get them together with a duo from another school. That way they're making connections, meeting those other kids. Each of those groups of four have a chaperone attached to them. So anytime we're in an airport, in a park, they have that chaperone that's in charge of the four of them. We have three RDPST staff going, two of which are floaters, which means they're not attached to a group. That way if anything happens, see a kid wakes up in the morning and isn't feeling great, can't go to the park, the floaters are there at the hotel to help them out. So they're good to have in any situation that may arise. Last year was amazing. They did not have to help any sick kids. So awesome. We also teach kids very extensively how to travel through security in an airport. What do you not joke about in an airport? How do you act? How do you walk calmly through an airport? Things that many kids are unfamiliar with because lots of the kids that we take have never, ever been on a plane or to an airport. You can see our fancy custom shirts that we're all rocking is another little safety thing that we do. When we are traveling in the airport, our groups wear their T-shirts over their hoodies or they take their hoodie off. They've got their T-shirt on. That way we can see, okay, there's four pink shirts over there, four pink shirts over here. They're together with their groups. Before we leave, we have a big meeting where we talk a lot about different scenarios. So we'll give them different situations, like you've just gone to the bathroom at Magic Kingdom. You get out, your group is gone. What do you do? How do you find them? And we talk about all different things like that. Some kids feel confident, safe, ready to go with the parks and all these things. I'm going to talk more about the curriculum now. So I've already told you that we've rebranded the trip to be STEAMS instead of just science. In our proposal that you will see hopefully in a couple of months, you will, for the 2027 trip, or if you've seen our proposal for the 2026 trip, you can see the variety of curriculum outcomes. We worked very hard on our new proposal to use a wide variety. We also have curricular outcomes from grade six to grade nine in there as well. So the stuff they have learned and stuff they will learn. At the next, at the last meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Ritzma from Glendale actually showed us some exothermic reactions and he like blew up corn search for us. And the kids just thought it was so cool. We're like, well, that's exothermic reactions. We explained all of that. And then one of the STEAM searches you'll see is actually looking for that in the parks. Our pre-trip meetings, we again link to the curriculum, looking for things like group work, research, presentation skills. And we also discuss a lot budgeting and exchange rates, which some kids give us the big eyes when they're like, what is the like, how much is that hoodie actually going to cost me? Okay, as far as like student growth, it is so amazing to be on this trip with these students and see how much they can grow within those seven days that they're together. I've had kids who at first won't order from a restaurant. We go to the parks, they need to order their own food and they're too nervous. So I'll do it for the first couple of days and after that, they're like, okay, step aside. I've got this. I'm ready to go. And that's so awesome to see. They learn all sorts of skills like reading a map. How many of our kids actually read a map nowadays? Probably zero. When we get to the park, they figure out how to orient themselves. Where do we go? We look at this map, figure out where things are, how to get there. Group work and communication is a huge area of growth as well. Lots of them are with kids that they didn't know before this trip and they figure out how to problem solve together. It's their first time sharing a hotel with somebody. They have a slight disagreement over shower schedule. How do we problem solve that and figure that out together? So it's super awesome to see. They learn about a whole new area of the world. Some of our kids will come away with like very deep observations about the mistakes that they make. Sometimes they make really random observations that we correct. Like last year I had a kid that came up to me and said, Dan Nygum, did you know Americans really hate lids on cups? And I said, what are you talking about? And they had noticed that in all of the parks we went to, they didn't give lids for cups to reduce plastic use. So this kid was then thinking, oh, Americans hate lids. So we talked about, oh, actually, why do they not give that plastic? It's very similar to this and we corrected that. But there's lots of super cool observations that they make about a whole new part of the world that are actually accurate. Budgeting and fundraising, huge. Both of these guys are going to talk about their fundraising experience and how that was able to help them on the trip. And then, yeah, Christina's already talked about money exchange, but lots of the kids had no idea that the American dollar was different. And they didn't know that it fluctuates and sometimes it can be worth this many Canadian dollars. Sometimes it's worth this many Canadian dollars. So that's super awesome to get to experience. Going forward, we are trying to add one more day back to the trip. In the past, the trip would be anywhere from nine to 11 days. When we, the four of us that are here now, so Sidney, myself, Lucas Erickson and Dan Ritzma, when we took over the trip, we decided to scale it back to seven days and make the days quite a bit shorter, where we don't typically start before 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning, which I know sounds like early, but it's not as early as it was in the past. And we're huge, I think most nights we were back in our room by 10 o'clock. And we are trying to add an eighth day because there is one experience that Mackenzie's going to talk about that we had to cut out, that we'd like bring back in. But we can only do that if we can keep the cost of the reasonable enough. We know how much international travel is right now and we don't want to out price it for our families in the district. Also, coming forward, Dan Ritzma has decided to pursue a different opportunity. So he's not, not going to be applying with us for 2027. When we crunch some numbers, we've decided just to keep it as three Redder Public employees. That means that we have one more paid person, which means it'll bring the cost down for everybody for the trip. Also, we always want to provide as many opportunities as we can in Florida, but we also take into consideration the mental health of the students and adults on the trip. Yes, we could add a basketball game or another show somewhere, but then if we're not getting back to our room until midnight and then we're up again at 6:30 the next morning, that's not what's best for our students and for travel. We're trying to teach the students, you can't do it all when you go somewhere. You have to take care of yourself for the enjoyment of the trip. So Mackenzie went on UST 2023 and this was the first trip that was approved by the board for UST post-COVID.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here today. Like I said before, my name is Mackenzie Clark and I went on the UST 2023. I wanted to go on UST since I was in grade two when my mom came up from school talking about the trip. When it was my turn to apply for the trip, I took a week to do my application to make sure it was perfect, to help my chances of being chosen were the highest they could be. I took time to really think about who my teacher references were going to be, to make sure I had the only good things to say about. It was very exciting the day that me and my mom got accepted for UST 2023. It was my goal to be here for the trip by myself, all of it. I did this through bottle drives and a garage sale. For 16 weeks, I delivered 100 flyers every Monday. These flyers told people about the trip and said I would be back on Thursday to collect any bottles they were willing to donate. I would then drive around with my parents on Thursday evening, collecting bottles that were left open. Many people left notes or waited to meet and talk about their UST stories and experiences. Leading up to the trip, everyone attended the meeting once a month. During these meetings, we would do get to know you activities to learn more about each other and where we would be going in Florida. It was a great time to get to know our chaperones as well. We also had a guest speaker come to a meeting to teach us about space before we went to NASA. The whole trip was like nothing I had ever done before. My favorite part was going to see the dolphins at Discovery Cove. It was so amazing to go to different attractions in Florida during our week there, such as Disney World, Epcot and the airboats. I also got to feed a giraffe at Bush Gardens. Even though my mom was my chaperone, I still feel that I was able to gain experience in international travel and gain independence while traveling. I still remember learning about the physics of roller coasters at Disney Hollywood Studios and how the Tower of Pairs has an algorithm that changes the ride every single time. On the first day of high school at Huntington Hills, it was. On the first day of high school at Huntington Hills, it was comforting to see people from UST in my classes. These people were not in my main groups and I did not go to the same school as many of them for middle school. But I built relationships with them on the trip and it was amazing to see them. I even ran into one of the boys from my group at cross-country zones in grade ten. I had a meaningful conversation with him about how high school has been going while he's at Thirber. Um, this trip has led a spark for international travel for myself and I'm going on the Huntington Hills trip to France in April 2026, where I'm also working to pay for the trip through bottle drives. I hope this trip continues to be an opportunity for middle school students to enter RDPST in the future. Thank you.
Hi everyone, my name is Merrick McCuskey and like I said, I'm doing the Thirber program. Um, so I didn't have as much time to work on any applications as Mackenzie, because the trip got, uh, I guess announced kind of last minute. Um, so I had about two days to make an application, um, but it was good enough for me to get in. And I started doing bottle drives right away and I ended up being able to raise the full five thousand dollars needed with only doing bottle drives. So there's a picture of it there.
You can just math out how many bottles that is.
Yeah, so there was multiple times we had that many bottles. But yeah, it paid off and I was able to pay for the trip through pretty much only bottle drives. Before the trip, um, I learned plenty with the parks that we're gonna end up going to because of the pre-trip learning that we were gonna, that we had to fill up. I also learned about budgeting and, um, currency exchange through looking for, um, how much money some items that I wanted to buy in Florida cost me. And, um, yeah, it was crazy, cause when I was looking through it, the Canadian dollar was super low. But, um, I was able to buy, um, US cash when I got it.
Nice thought.
My favorite, uh, part of the trip was when we were able to go to Busch Gardens. Um, that day we didn't stay in our groups, but we're allowed to go with whoever we wanted just because of the way that like the class patterns were. Um, so me and a couple of the other Gateway kids and then, um, my teacher, Mr. Erickson, we hung out that day. We were able to go on some crazy rides. Um, one of them's Iron Wazzy, there's a picture of it there. And it has a ninety-one degree drop, so we're going down and backwards. It's crazy, um, but yeah. Yeah, it's crazy. Um, so I have some connections that I made, um, has helped me a ton at Thirber. And sometimes we're just walking through the halls and someone's just like, hey, are you Merrick from the science trip? And then it's cool to just be able to talk to them about how things have grown since I've seen them last in April. It's helped a big school, it's helped make a big school feel smaller. Um, and something that I learned on this trip was, well, all about kinda, uh, the day at NASA about space. Um, especially the space shallows, they have this big presentation that you can go through and then you can end up seeing the space shuttle from like five feet away. Um, so that, that was super fun. Um, and yeah, I learned a lot from that day. I would definitely recommend going on the science trip to anyone that's like at all interested, interested in going. Um, the fun itself is a bit, like it's a bit daunting, it can seem like a lot, but it's definitely worth it. And I hope more kids can keep going on this trip so they can have an incredible experience just like me.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, we're ground. So this is Felix. Yeah. She had a day. Um, so one thing that we ask the students beforehand is they do a STEAM search. So this is his STEAM search from 2025. And really what it is, is we put it together, um, there's a slide for every day. So a pre-trip question, answer this question before we go on the trip. You can see the outcomes at the bottom, so science six outcomes. And then during the trip, we remind them during the day, hey guys, your pre-trip question. Get your picture of your airplane for that day. Magic Kingdom, we talk about the exothermic reactions, the fireworks show is spectacular, um, we need for that. Uh, Kennedy Space, talk about how astronauts, um, experience space, space and their challenges. That's a science nine outcome. Um, the airboat tours, the alligators, there's another science nine outcome in bi- biodiversity of the different environments. And it's kinda hard to see in that picture, but there is like an alligator in the background of that. Yep, yep, yep. Um, Hollywood Studios, they talk about the Newton's law and the sensation of weightlessness. And that's one of the things that we know they talk about, um, during the physics of Disney School. Um, Epcot, this one is a social eight outcome, talking about, um, diversity. We're respecting diversity of other people and you can go and learn about the countries and eat the food, especially in France is super good. It's my favorite one. Uh, Busch Gardens, we talk about negative G forces. There's that Iron Wazzy again that keeps coming up. Kids either love it or hate it. Uh, Merrick talks about the Busch Gardens day a little bit. Because some of the rides are so intense. That's one of the days when I don't have, uh, I'm one of the floater chaperones. I take all the kids that don't wanna do the intense rides and we go look at more animals and do the tame rides again. I'm more than happy to help them on that. Um, SeaWorlds, uh, more, some more science eight, talking about the human impact. There's human impacts, um, signs in all the presentations everywhere, talking about how we're affecting all the animals around us. And we're not doing Animal Kingdom, this is from last year. Um, Animal Kingdom has a huge art component, so here's a grade nine art outcome about how they turn realistic animals into the cartoons that we see on the shows. Um, one last thing we wanted to show you, to highlight for you today. Um, this is actually from this year's trip. So on our last meet, or two meetings ago, the groups got together, we assigned everyone a location and they researched the trip, or researched that location, and then they actually presented it to us. So they had to stand in front of all of us and explain where we're going and what we're gonna do. This is group two, they researched Kennedy Space Center. Oh, no. We're not on access on our sensors. Sorry. That's terrible. I thought I had changed that. Anyways, they go through and they talk about, um, what to eat, what the rides are, what the shows are, um, safety, things to consider when we're there. Can you take your backpack? Can you not take your backpack? Different things like that. Um, what they wanna find out when they're there, any questions they have that they wanna be answered, those kinda things. And so everybody knows about everything, cause we know that, especially younger kids, well, even my husband, we go on a trip and they're like, where are we going? What are we doing when we're there? So we wanna put some bonus on them to put some research ahead of time to own the trip. So anyone, do you have any questions?
I always love talking.
So, so at this time, I would open up the board to trustees to ask any questions. Trustee Waters, what?
I think it's a great opportunity for all students to, you know. I know I had a presentation last year from, I think it was Pines Alternative. And this gentleman who taught us every day on the plane, and you go on a plane and get that experience. And you know what? And you ended up being, uh, free ambassadors for regular public. And it's a great opportunity for you to see what another part of the world was like. Always supportive.
Uh, again, thank you as well. Thank you for giving your time to share with us this afternoon. Your, your likes, what you remember, how things were. I, I do have a question for the students. Um, it does say most days start around six or seven, but there's what, a two-hour time difference? How many days did it take you or did you ever get used to getting up at like four in the morning? Or did you even realize that you were getting up at four in the morning?
Um, for me, honestly, I didn't realize it. I was so excited to just go to the parks and have it on. It didn't really make a difference for me.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Um, personally, I'm not much of a morning person, so that was.
That's why I asked.
But, um, you start to get used to it by the night, so it's fine. If you're gonna get up to go to like SeaWorld or a park or something like that, it's better than waking up at six.
True. So teachers, did you find it hard? Was there, was there always some kids that would be a little bit more urging in the morning to get up or?
You know what? I, last year we didn't have any problems, cause we talk a lot about respecting the people around you. And so, you know, you have to respect the timeline. You need to be breakfast at seven, you need to be on the bus at seven forty-five. It's not fair if we all have to wait for you and they were, they're great.
Yeah, last year my group of girls that I chaperoned, I would text them in the morning, you're up, you're ready to go, thinking that's when they would be rising and they'd be like, we've got our hair braided, we're ready to go. And they were ready before me, like, there you are. Excited to have the day.
Well, again, thank you very much for sharing your, your thoughts and your experiences.
I have, uh, trustee Waters and then trustee Summers.
Just one question I forgot to ask. You were saying that you, uh, you go over the list of the, what the students, what to say and not say at the airport? Can I get that list?
Yeah, it's helpful, hey?
Trustee Summers?
Thank you so much. This is really valuable for me and I was so impressed to hear that you made your own money for the trips. Like fantastic. So yeah, thank you so much. You did really well. Great presentations.
Um, and I will close and speak to this as a parent. Um, I, I just wanna say thank you so very much, Mackenzie and Merrick, for being here and sharing your experience. Um, this year I am the mom of a student that is going on the 2026 STEAMs trip. And similar to you, Mackenzie, you started in grade two, you said. Um, it wasn't as early for my daughter who's going on the trip, but it was probably at the beginning, middle of grade six. Um, and knew what the expectations were in the application process to ultimately attend a trip of this magnitude and the work that goes into it. Similar to you with taking a week to do your application, um, she also took a week and was very, very, it was, i- if she was applying for a job, I would have been very, very proud of the efforts that she put into this application. And you speak of the parent portion, um, I filled out that part, obviously, and was told that I did not do a good enough job and was not going to be giving them what they needed um, for the parent portion of the application. So I think that, and, and I've spoken very highly of international travel and students participating in international travel in my time as a trustee and the opportunity that it gives students outside of the four walls of a classroom. And Mackenzie and Merrick, you speak to the opportunities and the growth that you had raising your entire, um, trip on bottles alone and the work that went into that, um, is incredible. It, it's like working a job to ultimately have a reward. And I just wanna say thank you so, so very much, um, for coming to our board and presenting. It was very valuable. And to the staff that make this opportunity available to students. I think it is absolutely incredible to speak to the curriculum outcomes from grade six to grade nine. This is not just an, a trip for fun. It is a trip that teaches our students things that they will not get in your traditional classroom. And it's incredible. Um, so thank you so, so very much for being here today and presenting to our board. It was very valuable information.
Thanks for having me, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I will move on to ten point three, Pines Alternative Schools Field Study Proposal.
I have a feeling the previous presentation just made this more easier for us. Yeah, thanks very much. Um, so before you, you have a proposed five-day trip to the Disney World theme park from our Pines Alternative School, taking place May eighteenth to the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-sixth, so. Um, the purpose of this trip, um, is to allow Pines Alternative School students the opportunity to experience international travel. It provides equity of opportunity, um, and it builds community and skills, uh, around fundraising. So our field trips are required to have some curricular connections. Um, and these get reviewed, uh, with, uh, through our International Student Department Director, Ryan Plastow. Um, this trip, uh, you know, does more than that to the actual sort of written curriculum. You know, there's some unwritten curriculum on communication and teamwork. Uh, and they do it through a unique way, um, by, um, speaking about, we get to Disney workshops. The last presentation you heard it in one of the Disney workshops, this one solely does Disney workshops, like, uh, teamwork the Disney way, uh, technology of Disney parks, et cetera. Um, and so they, but they also provide, um, the ability for students to earn CTS credits, depending on what they knew and what they learned during their fundraising experience. Because, um, this trip also provides a lot of opportunity for students to fundraise and they also, um, you know, group fundraise. So in some cases, you're fundraising for yourself and this trip does a lot of that community fundraising to ensure that kids can go on the trip. It's designed and led by, uh, one of, uh, the school's superstar, Yee's Kami Keeping. It was she had the genesis of that several years ago and has kept this, uh, moving forward. It involves, uh, other school staff and supervisors. Um, the trips get reviewed for all of their safety plans. Fireout, Special Health and Safety Coordinator and, uh, has approved. And, uh, that's not just a rubber stamp either. Jackie, I get to be part of those back and forth emails, but also make suggestions and they send in the proposal back to the. Uh, the safety plans are nice. Yes, big cost, uh, cost breakdowns, chips around forty-five hundred dollars, but they give, the board gives approval. We require them to go up to ten years, so they're just estimating that, uh, cost right now. Um, and, uh, again, to provide lots of examples as to how they will go about fundraising. So the cost, does it cause a barrier against the ones?
And if I could just jump in there, I spoke with them a couple of days ago and just talked about their last trip. The last trip, they were able to raise fifty-three thousand dollars through their fundraising efforts and that allowed them to reduce the cost for each individual boy by a thousand dollars. And then the travel company did another, uh, had four scholarships that allowed four dollars to reduce it another five hundred dollars for two, one trip. So, uh, lots of work I know that goes into that group fundraising effort from all the staff at that building and really support all of the work that they do in that.
Yeah, I think that's that equity of opportunity piece we make note of. Um, because they're an alternative school, fewer traditional schools do field trips, they, they do other trips. And for a while they had alternative setting that wasn't available. And over, um, years they've been trying to do more, like trying to provide clout. So they're trying to provide that sense of community to the school and they, that's why they started this trip. It's to, you know, um, help it, it's their school and they want kids to have that opportunity inside. So, um, the board's approved it in the press and, uh, Chad's recommending they approve this trip as well. I hope you take any questions you may have about it.
Very much, trustee Summers?
Is there any guidance on, to the students on how to make more money on our own?
I, I think a lot of it, there is a lot, I, I would say that, you know, the, the ultimate STEAM trip provided one example. Um, I would say that in the middle would be our ultimate, uh, this trip compared to if you went to high school. Right? If you went to one of our high schools, running trip, there was a lot more guidance from the staff, uh, and organization around it. Uh, and I think it's, um, sort of necessary to make sure it happens, if you go.
Trustee Waters?
When I saw the price, I thought that, wow, that's great. But then I realized it's just five days. So I would assume because the cost of everything is so high that they've just cut down the number of days?
Yeah, so again, I guess something I should have mentioned, if you take a look at that time frame, typically we ask our, you know, high schools to try and organize it around a holiday time. Um, when I spoke with Kelly, this aligns with their quarter system. So they're in our alternative schools, they, they don't do two semesters, they do four quarters. Um, so to allow kids to reset or when kids join, you know, maybe they, they drop again in the course of regular high school, they need picking ups. They do a few four quarters. So this aligns better for them on their quarter system or, you know, when they might miss out or how you finish off a quarter. It's also the cheapest time that you can go to the park, right? And so they're around the passes and things like that. So that's why those five days. But I, I do, you know, Kami's done this, um, multiple times before and I think she knows when it's gonna come in at. But, you know, it's, it's, um, it's, it might come in higher, that might come in lower. We just ask them to give us a cautious.
Vice Chair McCollie?
Um, so one of the things that was pointed out, uh, with the UST presentation was they take a certain amount of kids and then they have a waiting list, right? And twenty twenty-seven is a year and a half away. Just, did they, um, did the Pine School encounter any issues or problems with kids that applied to go on their last trip and then are no longer part of the school? Because it's a very fluid school. Do they find this, um, a difficulty for them to get the kids to commit? Because they don't know where they're gonna be in a year and a half?
I, I, not that I've heard, but we also have seen over time here the population of our Pines Alternatives being a little more stable, like kids are going there and because some of the opportunities are there and it works for them. Um, the timing of classes, uh, sort of some of the forgiveness that's given, you know, around those things. We are seeing more kids, you know, traveling through two, three, uh, it comes as a school choice. Yeah, it comes as a choice, right? So, uh, but also that community fundraising portion, if you will. You know, if you're out, you're out, just gets the next person in line, which is a pretty neat, uh, function of, you know, prepared to. You know, if you're out, you're out, just gets the next person in line, which is a pretty neat function of, you know, prepared that if you're working for the booster club, that one is attached to you and that lives in there, right? So you definitely get that. So it's, sorry enough, you dropped out, but the other rest of the community that speak about those dollars are earned.
Great, thanks. Trustee Summers? So just to bring up the past a little bit, we have a trusty rules. How might we integrate the carbon footprint assessment into the planning process for the school trips going forward?
We have just about complete a proposed change to our main procedure that takes a look at that that we would like to bring to the board at some point in time. And with what's happened this year, everything's sort of been pushed back, but we have taken some of that feedback from previous boards into consideration, the application process for schools and that. So we have some things coming forward that I think the board can weigh in on the future and provide the will of the board as to what you like to see schools doing, you know, as they move forward. But for this trip, that's not part of it, right? But there is a piece in there that they propose that we'll get some feedback on in the future.
Brian's referring and looking at different procedures across the province for schools that do have category field trips. Field trips. And then he's incorporating that into it and it'll be revised in the procedure that that's simply forward. Or because typically that's under our peruse, but it's just some staff change.
Trustee Barrett Smith?
Just a new trustee, can I just give a little bit of background? I did read through this whole thing. So how long have you guys been doing this for the Pines? And can we talk about it's every other year? Is that around just the way that they have to fundraise as that school? I'm just giving a little background.
So they've had two trips historically and it usually is around that two to three time, year timeframe in between. And there's been lots of feedback from our group. Just that core group of students that are excited to go on that trip.
And do they typically have like a waitlist or can kind of anybody who wants to go go because of that kind of range of numbering?
I'm not aware of any waitlist that they have.
Okay.
There's safety guidelines on the number of chaperones required. And so, you know, we just gave the example where they take 100 kids, right? So it would be a matter of creating more chaperones if you had more kids. So like this is, they would prefer to fundraise for everybody and bring them in.
And the fundraising model that I'm talking about is different than the U T S one as far as the whole total goes. One big pot, yes?
To reduce the cost across the groups. So last time they had raised 53,000, they was able to reduce each of the travelers by $1,000.
And how much does it typically cost for the travelers then?
It would be $3,500 each. So they would have paid $3,500 on their own and that would have been covered for the others.
Okay, I understand.
So they wouldn't set them up on doing, first of all, the driver, how they would do that, right?
I understand.
That's the uniqueness of the group fundraising amount.
I understand. Thank you. Trustee Gilch.
With the equity part, it kind of goes into that it's equity for all and stuff. I'm just curious on the inclusion part because that can bring a higher cost. Not to say that it's not deserving, but I'm just saying that sometimes they require assistance a little bit more. So is that taken account into this as well or is that just kind of as case by case basis?
Yeah, I do think it would be depending on who applied. Something else that happens in this trip, you know, and then a few of our other trips that I think the central middle school fridge conversion trips is parents are able to go on these trips as well, right? And we have that in other trips as well as if there's extra, if there's barriers on an inclusive piece. Parents are invited to be part of that.
I will, sorry, do you have a hand up? No, okay. So when I think about this field study request from the Alternative School Center, one of the things that I think back to is the presentation from these students and Trustee Waters, you kind of touched on this presentation. And the student who presented to us was incredible, actually. And what he spoke of was the leadership that this opportunity had given him. And it had allowed him to come out of his shell and explore potential careers that he hadn't thought of before. And presented, he did an incredible job presenting to us. And I think when we think about our students being involved in international travel, we really need to focus on the opportunities that it is providing some of our students. We heard in the Ultimate STEAMs presentation that some of these children have never traveled before and they never travel again. And as a school board, we request this proposal for the field study request to be extremely extensive. And it needs several checklists or things on a list, including transportation, accommodation, safety. And as a school board, if it meets the requirements of the proposal that we have ultimately outlined for the submission of the proposal to come through, I believe that it is incumbent upon us to approve it because a lot of work goes into these field studies. And I've said this in the presentation of STEAMs, there is absolutely nothing like student travel or international travel for students. I've seen the own growth of my own daughter, who, this will be her first school trip this upcoming year, but who did international travel this past summer. And the growth that goes into it for preparation and fundraising, it's... Those are some life skills that you can't teach without, anyways. So with that, I would look for a motion for the field study request. Trustee Waters?
I'll make a motion. We approve the... Yeah, the Pine Alternative Field Trip for next year to go to 2027 California.
And it's Florida.
Or Florida. I'm sorry.
Send them where they want to go.
Well, I just think in Florida because we're talking about the other one, so.
Can I?
Aaron, do you got that?
Do you like for me to read it?
Please.
That the Board of Trustees approved the proposed Pine's Alternative School Trip to Orlando, Florida from May 18th to 23rd, 2027.
Well said, Jim.
Good job, Jim.
Well said.
I'll go in favor.
Go for Aaron.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron.
10.4, 2026-2027 Division Calendar. Deputy Dan Lauer.
This is Dan's afternoon. So this is an extra copy that was maybe provided by the other table.
So before you, you have a proposed Division Calendar for 2026-2027. Again, apologies. Typically, you know, it would come to you before this date, but things have gotten in the way. And I believe that we will have a 2027-2028 back to you before the end of this year. Parents rely on this and just start looking after summer holidays and things. And so, you know, we are a bit behind the V call on this one. So, but in Dallas back last year, we actually reached out to our parents and talked about school startup. We did a survey, would we do like to see schools start up? And, you know, they overwhelmingly said, if possible, always start after the September long weekend. And that's not always possible. And so we did two years, we had two years, we're running two year this year that we're not able to do that. So I want to walk you through some of the features of this. Something to be aware of is that it's not easy developing a division calendar because we are locked in by a number of things contractually. For our ATA members, we have to take a look at instructional hours that can be assigned. There's a sizable time that can be assigned. Education Act defines a school can't go into July. And so there's not a lot of room to move here. Our division for multiple years has provided staff learning days in there. And so those are some things that the board has, you have to just say, no, we don't want those and create maybe some more school days. We are, under the Education Act, school divisions and school boards have the ability to set their own schedules. But you have to make sure that from K to nine, there's 950 hours of instruction at a minimum available to K to nine students, 1,000 hours on high school students. So a calendar has to take that into consideration because there's enough school days, you know, to do that. And so this calendar meets all of the requirements there, but it has some unique features. So once again, this feature is a five-day startup in preparation for our division staff. It's the third year of, you know, providing this structure. After we did it last year, we reached out and the majority of teachers said, yeah, yeah, I like it. What that allows is in those five days, it involves, we have dedicated individual preparation time for teachers where we say administrators hats off. They've got to get ready for their school year in their classrooms. We have division training, our new curriculum or technology that can take place. Two years ago, there's a lot more than there was this August for startup. And then schools require their own time for staff meetings or grade level team meets, et cetera. So those take place, those five days, and they're spelled out for staff in the beginning. Because Labor Day falls this year, on September 7th, we're not able to begin and we're not, as I said before, not allowed to go into July to do this. So what we've done is try to share five full days. So when you talk to school administrators and teachers and in the past, we've had calendars that would go for like two days and then go in the long weekend. And we would see our attendance, you know, merge in after this, that they wouldn't show up for the first two days. So this is try five full days, get some routines established, you'll have a three-day weekend and then you're moving forward. So provides five full days there. You'll notice on the calendar, teachers get paid for 200 days. Their salary is over 200 days. This calendar has 196 teaching days. There's nothing that in legislation that says they have to have 200 days, but they're paid over 200 days. And so school divisions try to adhere as closely as possible to those 200 days. And in Red Year Public, traditionally over the last 15 years, I'd say, you know, we're always in the 196, 197. I was reviewing somebody who was talking before, they remember when it was right to 200 days and things like that. But it's, I believe it's a fair balance, but there's 196 working days for staff in here. It provides 177 instructional days at the K to eight level, which allows us to make sure we get the 950 hours of instruction. Past calendar is about 176 days and it really puts us up tight against the instructional in some of our schools to get to the 950. So this gives, you know, six more hours of your typical school days to make sure that everyone gets, you can meet the 958 hours of instruction. A major shift in this calendar is at the elementary level going to two reporting periods, so two report card times. And only way that we can get to that is that we are going to move our elementary teachers to live reporting. So we are in the majority of school divisions in Province Valverde where parents can't go on to power school and see how their kids are doing sort of in real time. And so with the ability to log in and see where your kids are at, you would need to be in front of, you know, and you'll visit a teacher and find out where my child is at three times. We can do two times. It's what we've learned from other school divisions that are doing this. And so this calendar features report card, or sorry, parent teacher a few times in November and in March, but live reporting from day one, sort of starting out.
Have we reached out into the community to find out what else is going on in the community for around these times? Because I guess where I'm from, there's a big Christmas event going on the week of November 23rd to 28th. And if we're having teachers that are off, then that means all kids are going to be going to, you know, we're not going to have schools take the kids to really the Westerner for their mistletoe magic and festival of trees and such. So that, is that known or do we even know about that?
That was one of the comments that was given, but it wasn't a widespread comment and it came from one school.
Yeah, so we've shared this with every single administrator and said to put it out with your teachers and provide a feedback on the school level. There was one comment around that ability to, you know, to maybe do that. And again, you know, our parent teacher view, there is some, there could be times around do that, but there was only one comment around that.
Oh, like this falls on like the preview dinner and then, and then like festival lines. Is that what that is right there?
Yeah, there's some trees that the kids go during the day and sing.
Yeah.
So this gives us some lead time to problem solve that.
Vice Chair McCully?
It's always, always difficult when Christmas is the Thursday or Friday. I remember early in my career, we had the kids come to school for the Monday, Tuesday. And for years and years, we found the declining enrollment to have them go to school for those two days. So I know this is uncomfortable and can be problematic for, you know, many parents in our community. But, you know, we can do what we can with what we have. So thank you for doing that. One of the things I would appreciate some more information on, next time you do this presentation is at the, you indicate Alberta education minimal hours of instruction. But do you have how much we are doing, like are we doing 475 hours for the kindergarten? Are we doing 950 hours?
Yeah, so I have all that data, right? We're required, we used to have to report it. Now we're just required to have it in case we were ever opted not. So I know all those and some of it's driven by busing. And so we'll have a variation. We don't have a single kindergarten under 475 and we don't have a single K to H. And if that's how we operate, our nines are always way over because the majority of our nines in our high schools would have a thousand hours. So there are great educators getting a thousand hours, but we don't have any schools that are under the required hours. But they do vary, you know, slightly around the amount of time and part of it's busing, like when we can get buses and stuff, so.
Some of my background for possibly wanting this added to the next one is because all the PDCs is days at school, days not in school. And every generation says, I went to school more, I went to school more. But they don't take into consideration that the school days were different 40 years ago, 20 years ago. And so that's why when you post publicly how many hours, it would make more sense for those that, you know, went to school 23, 40 years ago, that it is the same, it's the days that are different.
Yeah, and so I typically take those calls once this is ready and if there's any, you know, community or one of our parents wondering about this, and then I can help to go back in time and go, yeah, it's not actually, it's been for 30 years that this has been the amount. So I guess just for a little clarification, that part down there, Alberta education minimum hours of instruction, do you want like a division average or like how would we put that out there? Because I think that's what it implies just to say, hey, it's not the amount of days, it's the hours that the board is responsible for ensuring hours of instruction that happens. And these need those hours.
I guess if all kindergarten and all grade one to nines and all grade 10 to 12s would not be the same, and I'm getting the sense that it would have to be an average, which really doesn't answer my question, but wouldn't help.
No, I guess the answer is that every grade one to nine has a minimum, doesn't matter what school you go to, they're 950.
You meet that criteria.
You meet that criteria. And that same thing with 5,000 hours of K to 12.
I'm just going to jump in. Then I have Trustee Barrett Smith and then Trustee Davies. Also, one of the things, because I kind of to touch on what Vice Chair McCully has brought up. We do hear from community that it never feels like kids are in school. Maybe one of the pieces here to communicate to public is also not only instructional hours, but assignable hours. And that there are two different numbers at play here and it is a requirement to also meet some other hours for our staff.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. So when you see staff learning days, those fit into an assignable time. So all of our teachers, you know, we have a maximum amount of assignable time. And we're for the most part under, well, under those in several schools and up against it in other schools depending on how their timetable is set up. But what we've done, you know, but we'll hear from parents on that, it seems like they're never in school, is that we've been asking our schools to post what happens on staff learning days so that they don't think that this is a holiday for teachers. Because that's, that's when I get the calls, and they're not lots, but that's like the teacher just get another day off. Like, no. Like, no, not at all. And so how we counteract that is by sending out their staff learning day plans, sending out A and then putting social media, teachers learning how to help out kids struggling and reading and some just that information. So our parents truly understand is that the teachers aren't taking a day off. Right? Teachers are, we have teachers that would rather just teach kids that have to do some of the staff learning that we have to do to do grades. So it's part of that is as well. But those are the things that share, we don't get widespread, you know, sort of concerns every single year. We haven't for several years put this out to all of our parents. And sometimes that's also because there are just legalities that we have to meet and trying to explain the assignable time hours and the instructional time hours and things like that. So I don't pretend I had talked, that might be something for future engagement later on is understanding. Because if you do look at, you could look at another school board, and they may have a few more school days. What they have is less staff learning days. Because again, when you can't go past July and you don't start till September long weekend or the first weekend in August, there's only so many days you can fit in that you could make more student days by having less staff learning days. And, you know, if nothing was happening on staff learning days, or if our staff didn't need to know new things, you know, that might be with them. But I don't think that that's the case. Our staff are learning things and doing things and getting better, which helps so everybody's job.
Can I take on that either? I just have one that specifically. So Vice Chair McCully? Am I wrong that this year, because of what happened in October, we will not be hitting either of those targets?
That's correct. We, we've been absolved of meeting the hours of instruction.
By Alberta.
By Alberta Education, right? And so we're making some of them back at the high school level. The high school level, at high school exam periods count as instructional hours. And so, you know, so they get to that thousand hours, even though not all kids are always in school taking their exams during that exam period. But as you're aware of, in January, they're teaching right up until one day before we flip to the next semester. So they're making some of that time off. But no, we don't, we, no school division has to meet the required hours this school year.
All right, thank you. Trustee Barrett Smith and then trustee Davies.
Yeah, I was just, I think we've already kind of touched on it. I hear lots all the time as well that kids aren't in school as much as they used to. Just for, and I say that's not true. And just for full clarification, that's not true, right?
That's not true.
Great.
That's not true.
And then the second, which again, I was going to touch on, some of the schools that I follow, I've been noticing the increasing of posting of what they're doing on PD days, and I think it's making a big difference. So I would strongly suggest that we continue that because I, I think it's genuinely helping. And then when I do have community engagement with other parents, I can say, you know, here, like, see this teacher and they're writing about this business. And then I just propose the question, how do you expect them to improve upon this as curriculum changes? And this, do you want to do on their weekends? And then it's, then you can kind of kick people back into, you know, putting their feedback on the floor.
Well, and we know from the central office perspective, because in June, they create a staff learning day template that they submit back to us and outlines the whole year of staff learning days in their building and outlines what they're doing on those days.
And as a parent perspective, my last comment here is, when I first looked at this a few days ago, I was like, oh, no. And the more that I really looked at it and went through the whole thing, I just wanted to really congratulate you on that. I think it's very well thought out and it makes a lot of sense. And it's very practically, I, I just think it's very, it's very good. I approve of it as a parent. It makes a lot of sense. So, thank you.
Like, could I, there was, I think, one more question. I just have to point out a couple more things to you in the end that I think you need to be fully aware of this calendar, which is a little weird.
Okay, I have one more person on my speakers list, trustee Davies, and then I.
Okay, I was just gonna, so there's more. So you're getting more feedback for not starting in August rather than chipping away at June, given the nature of having less.
I mean, it's, the sun is out all the time. I'm thinking about that. But it's, is the feedback coming more that people don't want to start in August?
That's right. They want to start after.
They want to go to the end of June. Do they understand the trade-off?
Well, part of it is what Dad was probably going to mention too, was somewhat dictated by diploma and P A Ts. So in this calendar, the 28th, maybe what Dad was going to mention, that's a diploma day. So as much as we tried to not have anything that day, we have students that are showing up that day to write. So that becomes our last day.
Yeah, I think, and I'll circulate that to anything there, right? So again, I just de-dotted, it is a big change, the two reporting periods. And we'll need to, you know, share that with our parents. And from the teacher's point of view, you know, that haven't done it before, there, there's lots of questions around what does live reporting look like? How will we receive the training? How do we, we do this? And, and we're going to get feedback from them. We've got lots of models. I've got five examples of different school divisions that are doing it and how we, you know, do that moving forward. As I said before, we did share this with every principal, ask them to have staff come back and tell us overall their feedback, does the school support it or not? Every school supported it? There were two schools, again, it's about 50/50, you know, unsupporting. And it was mainly around, you know, the going to live reporting in the June 28th day. And I'll get to that in a second for that. So, so again, that will be a big change. But I think it's a, it's a welcome and a necessary change. We're going to be able to. And so as soon as you get to middle school anyhow, you start to learn how to use Power School and you're checking your kids' grades and things like that. So it can be an improvement for us. This is a consistent December. If you take a look, we don't have a staff learning day in December for the first time. So three kind of straight weeks. When we build this calendar, we're trying to build uninterrupted weeks of learning. And so, you know, Jason, we were talking about, you know, where that November day falls. We put this calendar together with our admin council, which is a select group of administrators that meets every single month. And that, that does an change and help advise sort of policy. And one of the thoughts into that is that, you know, we have the fall break on the 9th, 10th and 11th for three days. So to try and move, you know, two days off any closer to that, they go three days, you come for two, you go for three days, you're off for two. There's just, it just throws school schedules off. So kind of land in that spot. If you put it any further, you know, into December, then you only go for two weeks and you're off for two more weeks. So yeah, it's, it's not a super science. But I think one staff did remember, did mention that. We'll have to figure out how we move around that.
The other one around the 26th and 27th, it's in law with our trimester system at the middle schools. So it's right at the conclusion of that first trimester, you get to wrap up and have that before starting the second trimester. So.
So yeah, currently our middle schools are, they do, their parent teacher can use this speed coming up like on this Friday, but their trimester ended already in their weekend, other class in their option areas. And it wasn't great for them. So we're trying to align kind of all of our areas for our K to eights and our middle schools in doing so. Then the other, you know, point being, if you take a look in February, we, like, teachers get a day in lieu for parent teacher interviews. So by bringing this down to two sets of interviews, we get aligned closer to the six extra hours outside of the time that they would do. And we give them one day in lieu for doing that. There were some questions like, we already got that up before, you're taking it away. And my, you know, feedback I'm giving to principals, remind their staff is that you have to look, you're, you're only working 196 days. If you were to take away that day in lieu, it's 195 days. And so helping that understanding is that again, you're getting paid for 200 days, you're working 196 days here and not really wanting to get below 196 days or there. Then the last one is, it's a weird kind of ending in June. Alberta Education sets diploma exam dates, and they set provincial achievement test dates. And they've been moving farther and farther. And in language arts, they have a written part. And, you know, at the grade nine level, they're writing them in May. And so like, it's really crowding us out as to when we can, we can do things in this year. So for next year, they've set the science 30 diploma exam that you have to write on June 28th. And so we have to make the last day of school for high school kids, the 28th, because there's probably, when I look historically, about 60 kids. There will be about 60 in each semester by right science 30, but about 60 kids will be writing that exam. And that'll be the last day for everybody, you know, because we also can't have amongst our teachers, somebody being done Friday and then, you know, a quarter of being done on, on Monday. We originally went at this calendar, we had people, you know, maybe working into the Wednesday, but not coming in and only having three days preparation. And admin council often said, you know, okay, you got to come back one day instead of three days. And, and also then if we got two days, we could say, well, kids could come in, you know, into then, but are they going to show up for two days? And June at the end are just not going to come and start their holidays. We do, this is a little more family friendly with our K to eights and the majority of our high schools, we've done on that Friday, few kids writing on Monday and then all staff done. And so there's some staff not understanding that one as well that we have to help. And this is why. And hopefully it's an anomaly in, in moving forward.
Are they pushing it back because like to just curriculum a little bit farther?
I, I don't know what goes into there, how they arrive at it, that they, again, so they're actually moving some of their part days earlier, and then there's longer periods in between. They only do one exam a day. Now, they used to do two exams, right? But they only do one a day because of kids requiring accommodations, taking up double time. So one test starts at nine, you might be writing six hours. So they only write one test a day. They kind of set that in place. But yeah, it's, it's, it's not a great placement. Any other questions about the calendar?
Yeah, I'd be interested to know what attendance levels would be on the 12th and 13th of November.
Yeah.
In a lower range.
Chad, look at you and I, we looked at.
I actually looked at it. It wasn't, wasn't that far off of what our average was. No, it was another one where we just had a one day.
It was around, it was, I noticed the day before, rectory to reconciliation date. We thought that, you know, because it happened on the Tuesday, and we were worried that no kids would show up. And it was whatever highest attended days of that time.
This gives you a whole week.
Yeah.
I would be looking for a motion. Now, trustee Barrett Smith?
A motion to approve 26, 27, ready for school division calendar.
Nice presentation. All those in favor? Post? Please have the minute show. Opposition of trustee Muster. 10.5 provincial achievement exam results report, trustee, sorry, you have to be down. I've just made you trouble.
All right, I get a chance to speak. Thank you very much. What you have before you there is a, is a report on our provincial achievement exam results across the division. Students in grade six and grade nine are required to write provincial achievement tests in core subject areas. We get the data provided to us in a variety of formats. That one format provided to us is a percentage of kids meeting acceptable. Well, first of all, they, they break it out into acceptable standards, which are defined percentage of students demonstrating sufficient understanding to be considered on track. And a standard of excellence is a percentage achieving at a level that fully exceeds grade level expectations. The government provides us information based on the number of kids that are enrolled in a course, as well as the how kids that actually wrote the test did at a division level. And what I'm going to present to you here today is our results for students who wrote the test. Later on, Ron has a presentation, and we're required to report for the school division, kids enrolled in the course. And the theory behind that is that if you somehow excused your kids that might not perform as well on, on this test, your division results would increase, right? So what they do is that when they're figuring out the results for students enrolled, they assign a zero for each student that did not write the exam. And so that's helpful for, you know, encouraging divisions to have the maximum amount of kids participate, which if you look at the tables I provided you, we, we do really well against the province. Anywhere between four and 12% more kids write our P A Ts than the provincial average. And, but from looking at where we can make some improvements, I provide this report to you about the students who actually wrote the exam, because then that can provide us, then I don't have to worry about zeros, you know, clouding, you know, how we did on a particular concept. So schools and divisions have access to reports that break out the test to tell you how you did in curricular areas. And so I'm focusing on kids who wrote the exam here when I provide you these tables. And so we also get exam reports in five years increments. I presented to you three years here for two reasons. The fifth year of this was COVID, there actually wasn't any, you know, to report. But then also at the grade six level, we've been going through curriculum change. And so it's really difficult to analyze your results when you have two different curriculums. So in language arts and in mathematics, there's been curriculum change. You'll actually see that we did not write a PAT in French Language Arts six and science six this past year because it was the first year of a brand new curriculum being implemented. Those students will write in the second year, the, the grade six PATs. And so also, you know, I want to talk to you, I want to focus on our results at the acceptable level. Because when we go out and we meet the schools, we talk about schools, we talk about the universal strategies that they can try and build in, which theoretically then should help out, improve our standard of excellence results. But really, we focus in on the acceptable standards here. So that's sort of that trend comparisons I want to talk to you about. So first of all, you know, I want to talk about English Language Arts and Mathematics. And again, sort of long-term curricular trends aren't able to be identified by us because the curriculum changed, you know, from the last time they did the test in June of 23 to June of 2025. I do note, and it is a bit concerning, that we see an increase in the difference between ourselves and the province. So that's what we kind of take a look at is that, you know, we would like to be at provincial average or better in, in all of these areas. And, you know, we, we see in language arts and in math sort of a decrease. If you look at language arts specifically, in the 22, 23 school year, you know, we were 3.6% less of our students achieved the acceptable standards than in 24, 25, where we dropped to 9.1%. Now, that could be a little alarming, except for if you dig a bit deeper, you know, when we, when we're taking a look at this. If we look at the average score on that test at Red Deer Public, it was 58.1%. And the average score of the province was 61.7%. So really, a 3.6% decrease is one, at two questions, you know, getting right on a test on average across our division. There's not really any glaring areas that we can see, but I just want to put that 9% in perspective. The government sets that what they call a cut score, where they say, if you've got the score, you're acceptable. If you didn't get the score, you're not in the acceptable range. And so it's not as scary as it looks at that 9.1%. It's still concerning. We want to be looking at it, and we are looking at it moving forward here. Again, you'll see there's no data for science six and French Language Arts nine. And, but there will be a test written this year, and you'll get to see the results next year. Social Studies six is the only subject that's had a stable curriculum over those three years. And so we get a little clearer trend analysis, and we do remain slightly below provincial average, but we're sort of closing that gap and moving towards closing that gap. And I'll talk to you about what we hope to see coming out of this fairly soon. So what my report focuses on is what can learning services do to help improve those division results? Because every one of our schools that has these tests is asked to examine their own results and come up with improvement plans. And they actually have to present these, their own school results at a school council meeting and explain how, what they're going to do to help improve other results. But we do a systematic analysis of these results, and then we go out and next week, I have eight meetings at our middle schools, talk about the grade six results. We're taking a look at some of the curriculars that they did, you know, really good on and where they didn't do as well. We're showing them where we, you know, as a division, where we fit in and having some of those discussions about, okay, why, what can we do about this? And really, that's how we frame this here, is that looking at where we're at and always trying to improve. You're knowing it's also a different cohort of kids and other things are going on, right? So next week, we go out and do this in my learning services coordinator's, myself go out and have those meetings. We believe also that last year, the first year, we, we had the provincial achievement test written on the new government digital platform called Veretta for writing. And this was a bit of a change for our kids and, you know, our teachers, we identified some formatting of questions that they may not have been familiar with and things that our teachers have told us that, you know, that, you know, they haven't seen that style of questioning before. And so, you know, in working with them and planning about when you're doing your own in-class assessments, making sure that when they get it in a computer front, they don't freeze and not understand that type of question. So doing some work around there, last year, all of our students wrote on Veretta. So doing some work around there, last year, all of our students wrote on Veretta. Other school divisions chose to, and we did too, we said, do you want to write them or the school readiness? And all of our schools said, yes, we're ready. We heard from other divisions that some wrote on paper, some wrote on the digital assessment. And what their division data is showing them is that anyone that wrote on the digital platform did better than the paper ones. So we didn't force kids as we're all ready on that. But we do think there's field testing opportunities here and we support along with Tracy, our tech director, in helping teachers access the field testing through the digital platform. So we can support there. We continue our work in our three-year plan on high leverage teaching strategies and, you know, how they get into this new curriculum. And that work is ongoing and that you'll find that in school education plans, what they're doing, which then should hopefully drive the improvements here. We've added a, and I know you're aware of this, but a K to eight literacy and numeracy support person in each of our K to eight schools, a point eight FTE person at a significant cost to the division that we believe will help support all of those academic areas. And they're being asked to be supportive and effective in helping plan literacy and numeracy, academic interventions, not an administrative person out in the classroom, shoulder to shoulder with teacher. Each school has a bit of a variation on how that's working, but we do think that that's going to support, you know, some improvements moving forward. Or me, it's a point six, right? An FD, some schools, the other school chose to boost it up a little bit. Looking at our French language results, our languages coordinator collaborates with those teachers to break down and look specifically at their French immersion results and analyze things. We are, you know, purchasers, starting to use a program that I know you've heard, so have you heard before from our learning services team called the ARCAT, a reading comprehension assessment tool. And we're using that right now from grades four through 10, some of our grade 11 and 12 classes. But it really highlights areas that are in the curriculum and it's meant to be a benchmarking test of where your class is at to help teachers direct their instruction and curriculars based on that year's class. And so last year was the first year of doing that. We're getting better at doing that, getting better at helping teachers analyze results. Our coordinators go up and say, hey, look at this. Here's how you can use your results to help target your teaching within your class. Last year, we fully implemented what's called the May Math Assessment. And that is a common exam through grades one to five in mathematics. And they do that in May with the strategy that once their classroom, individual classroom teacher looks at that, they have one month left to sort of target where their kids might have been involved in some reteaching in that mathematics. And that again, we're bringing up grades one to five and those types of things here because it isn't solely the grade six teacher that's responsible for the grade six results. And it's not solely the grade nine teacher, it's not solely the grade 12 teacher. It is a teamwork that gets the students prepared through that. And so, you know, we really do focus all of our, majority of our supports here at the elementary level. You know, we've been talking with our elementary principals at sharing some of the grade six results, you know, the PAT results for teachers, their former students and making them understand the curriculum moving forward, right? The new curriculum, so. And the final thing that we believe, you know, that's helping out, that will help out especially in the language charts at the grade six level is that last year, you know, we had some pilot schools that worked on doing common marking together. And so our high schools have been doing that for years. And at the deployment exam level, they always get together and they mark tests. So they're similar, it's not just Dan, what he thinks is, you know, when he grades a paper. But they'll get together and everybody's, you know, pilot positive, there might not be your student, might be somebody else, but you actually become familiar with how you grade and there's some consistency across the grading of those language charts. And it just helps teachers understand and be able to predict and say where their kids are at, where they need support. But we think that that's going to help out on the writing side of things. And language arts is broken up into writing and reading comprehension side of things. So that's, oh, and finally, we talked about the social studies. I have a social studies curriculum later this year. It's K to three is the new social studies curriculum, but we have, you know, she's working with four to six and seven to nine teachers in social studies. So we hope to see a little bit of an uptick. It comes up the loss of our science coordinator because as you know, we're not keyboard adding coordinators down here. We substitute one out, put one in with new curriculum. But I think we'll see some uptick and I know she's been reaching out, having conversations individually, going into schools during staff learning days around the social studies curriculum. So I'll stop just at the grade six. I don't want to the grade nine to any questions you may have about the six results.
With the collaborative marking and it becoming a division, or being formalized in the division, is that something that we're going to communicate to individuals? Because I think that that's actually really, as a parent, I, I look at that and I go, that's a really great idea.
So typically, you know, that would happen where we didn't find like sometime and stuff because sometimes they'll do it in May, but they're also busy doing mixed your funding in May staff learning day. It's not really hurting, it's marking and so we've been staying away from it. So I guess sure answer is no, we don't typically communicate that, but it could be a useful thing to do.
But I think it kind of goes back to our calendar conversation is there's a lot of things that our staff do that our public may not recognize or know is taking place. And this marking is one of those things.
Yeah, I think anytime we can communicate, I don't think it's something. Last year again, I was in a pilot in schools, once we're getting it, you know, doing it all that that might be very communication.
It's more widespread, right?
Tracy Fairbanks.
For these results, do you break them out, like for example, language arts with our EAL learners?
Yeah, we, so in this, in this report I don't, but yes, we do break them out. So I have a language coordinator that's actually looking at those results. Ron, Ron has to break them out because we're required to report at those levels. So yet we do, we also break them out into first nations, media, U of M learners as well. But this broad report, all of those are rolled into this one. But you're, we are some, some interesting things in there, you know, as to, you know, how we might improve some of our results by targeting certain areas as well.
That might be an issue if you're writing that English language arts exam.
Definitely is when you look at some of our.
You see Ron not over there as.
In Ron's report, he has that right, Ron, and we have that broken out. You will see that on average, if you look at that average compared to, you know, our coded English as additional language students, they would be lower, you know, in those areas. So that just means, so what do we put in place? How do we support that and help them get better? So again, I just, I'm having this, the reds and greens, kind of scary, just use that for a visual. When, when Ron reports his report, he's required to report the percentage of kids, you know, of all our kids. So then we're actually like, we meet or above provincial when we do that because of the column that I provide you there, the difference between the participation rates, we are still not trying, so we say every student write this test. Let's see where you're at and go from there. So that's, that's our grade six results. Look at our grade nine provincial achievement test results. You know, we go, of course, my course has been new, there's been no new curriculum at that level yet. And I went, I was at a provincial meeting online yesterday and I've learned that they're pushing some of that off even right now. And next year they will be piloting a science seven to nine. But unlike before, they threw all these curriculums together. They said they'd listened and that they're going to, we're also just the only new curriculum other than a physical education and wellness will be the seven to nine science moving forward and trying to, you know, have less of them happening all at once in the division. But looking at our language arts nine results, we remain relatively stable in the province. And we're narrowing the gap from 23, 24 to almost on par with the province, only being 0.1%. You know, difference in our language arts. Our mathematics, the same, you see us over a three-year period improving in our division. French language arts is up and down. Again, really cohort specific on kids, a number of kids fluctuates in one year in grade nine. But we have a language arts coordinator that, or sorry, a French language coordinator that works with teachers and takes a look at those. Our science nine shows improvements. Our social studies nine shows improvements, you know, against the province here. Where are, you know, some concern is coming in, from my perspective and from my coordination perspective, is in our grade nine knowledge and employability courses. And what we see there is a sort of a general downward trend over the past three years, to where we're noticeably below the province here in KNE language arts nine, math and science nine. And again, sort of widening gaps there. And so, yeah, so we do have some concerns there. What's, again, so what's our action plan around this? Typically, you know, our grade nines are in our high schools and they do a lot of the action planning themselves, right? They take a look at this. So I only have a single coordinator in each area. My coordinators don't spend a lot of time in our high schools unless they're, you know, we see something that they might need some help in or they're asked to help again. And in pretty much their staff learning days, they're in our elementary and middle schools full time. But we are meeting with our high schools specifically to take a look at the KNE question here, you know, what, what's happening, you know, what are your thoughts? How do we drive these, you know, help improve forward? We've seen our numbers slip when we take a look at this. Two years ago, our KNE, there was 88 grade nine students wrote, there's only 66 this year. So, you know, when you have less students and they do a little poorer, then your results are also going to decrease. What we also know is that we're using it as a scaffolding course in our English, for English as additional language. And so we need to figure out what kind of, what, what that's doing. So if you're going from grade eight to grade nine and you're not prepared to be in a regular grade nine course, because grade nine isn't, there isn't two levels. When you hit high school, for every other core subject level, there's, there's, there's levels, right? But because we're doing public as a nine to 12 model, the province doesn't really recognize that. There's only one level of grade nine and then there's a KNE. So in some cases, what's happening, if you're not quite ready for English nine, you know, our KNE nine is where some of our EAL students are going into. So we just need to do a deeper dive. I don't have all the answers at this point, but it's at a point where I have meetings arranged with our high schools to go, okay, well, let's look at our KNE program analogy. So KNE stands for knowledge and employability. Lead to a certificate of completion. And then there's a pathway to get a high school diploma in the second half of the grade 12 year for students that can access that level. But it's a way to get some high school credentials and qualifications for some students that aren't able to, to meet that. But there is, I wanted to share, there's a little bit of concern there around our KNE, but we're on it.
Just quick question with how you've mentioned that it may be being used as a bridge in BRL students. Are we seeing those students staying in the KNE and then not coming back out in grade 10 and streamlining out into the different, because there is the two ultimately pathways of.
I, I don't know.
We'd have to take a step towards a deeper dive right now, let's find out what's happening there.
So for grade nine, they can go into a course called English 10 dash two. The KNE equivalent is 10 dash four. And yeah, I need to just take a look and see what the numbers in 10 dash four are to see if they're, but I don't know. This is, you know, what we've said, we start to see a trend over a period of time, there can be anomalies. I think like three years here is us time for us to go, hey, let's come and be deeper into it.
Tracy Fairbanks, is this the time to ask questions for grade nine?
Pardon me?
Is this the time to ask questions? Are you finished here or were you, we can finish this as well?
This is a grade nine question.
Okay, sure. So colors are green, green and red, except that, now let's talk about, just to try, let's talk about French language arts thirty dash one. So in 2023, we're 6.9 above the.
Sorry, that's in diploma exams.
Or diploma exam, sorry.
Oh yeah, we're just doing grade nines right now.
Okay, oh wait, that.
No worries, it's coming next after this report, if there's no more questions on, on our PAT nine results. Again, I think our PATs, grade six, we've got a little work to do. We're doing pretty well in our, at our grade nine levels. And again, I do want to stress that these are by the kids that wrote. And their metric is, you know, against the province, we do really well when you consider, because we have a high number of our kids write these tests. It's a great thing to do, right?
And so pay attention when Ron's speaking encompasses total cohort at that time.
No other trustees, so we would accept this report as information then. So thank you very much, Deputy Dan Lauer. We'll move on in the agenda. 10.6 diploma exam achievement results report. Deputy Dan Lauer, this is also yours.
Thank you very much. So similar background to diploma examinations with, with represented in acceptable and standard of excellence, but there is no participation rate here. If you take this course, you must write this exam as per 30% of your overall grade. So we don't look to participation rates here. You know, kids can access these courses whenever they've done the prerequisite courses leading up to a PG the 10 and the 20 level stream to write these 30 level exams. And so, you know, examining this as well, some overall division trends, it shows, you know, some strengths and stabilities and areas for improvement. Many of our courses are at or above the provincial levels when we're looking at our standard, acceptable standard. A smaller number shows persistent negative gaps that I think require our attention. So some areas of strength is, you know, our 30 dash one and our 30 dash two are consistently one to four points above our provincial, the provincial average here. French language arts, you know, we're showing some exceptionally high levels, right? Math 30 dash two is, you know, one of our clearest strengths. Physics 30 is moving forward as well at a good pace. You know, math 30, bio 30, social 30, they're kind of like along the province and stable with our province and slightly, well, slightly above, so we're okay there. What we're seeing if we're looking at that trend thing right now is in chemistry and psychology and social 30 dash two, we've had, you know, a few years of declining results that I think, you know, are part of my conversation with high schools, what's happening, what's, you know, what's, what are you doing about this? And where we go, this moment in time, sort of snapshot. So as I mentioned before, typically this mostly falls on our high school teams to take a look at their own results, which drive our provincial results if they ask for help. In certain areas, we don't have the ability to help them if they're being true. When they come to us for chemistry 30, I don't have a coordinator, but we can help, you know, find people that typically they're doing this on their own and you see over time our results will, will improve. So something's happening here and that they're going to need to make some adjustments, but it is part of our improvement cycle and taking a look at, at what's going on. Science 30, I can probably predict when I meet with them. It is a science that's most accessible, accessible for everybody. You can take it without actually having a prerequisite 20. So if a student's looking for both secondary, they'll take a science 30 course without having a prerequisite. And so more and more kids are taking it, nursing, for example. Now, except for the last three years, you can get into nursing school taking science 30. So we have more and more kids taking science 30. And, and so when that happens, your average is standing down slightly, but it's a good thing that kids are taking diploma exams. And you can look at, we also have participation rates. They do show participation rates, how many of your kids while on school pitch are taking these, these courses. But all in all, I also believe that our, you know, our high schools, our grade 12 students are being served while they're doing well potentially on these tests and really keep trying to get better in those areas. So now, just, just one more.
Move waters.
Okay, thank you. So I look at page 44 of 91.
Yes.
That's to do with the diploma exam results, acceptable standards. The colors are driving me, that's quite honest. I mean, you go 6.9 for French language arts and then you go down to 1.5, it's still green, but that's a drop of 5.4. I mean, if we go from 23 to 20, from 22 to 23, language friends is the difference is 6.9. And then you go the following year and it's 1.5 and then you get down to 1.2. What are we doing? Isn't there, I mean, isn't that alarming to go from 6.9 to 1.5?
In terms of the difference between ourselves and the province?
Yes.
I, I don't think so because these are a different group of kids every senior year. If you look at these 24, 25 kids, these are kids in grade nine in COVID as well, right? Like there's, we don't know all of the different things that went into this cohort of kids. And I think that's why it's most valuable to compare us against the province. Because the rest of the province is kids where we're going through the same things that all of our kids are going. because the rest of the province's kids, we're going through the same things that all of our kids are going through. And so it's really just a cohort of kids. And you're right, it's, you know, they had a hundred percent, but we don't know how many students wrote F L A thirty dash one in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, right? And I think if I remember rightly, there was a small number of kids that wrote in that year, like they dropped out of French immersion, you know, in there. So it's, I'm not that worried about that, trustee Waters.
For us, we look at the trend. So if we see a historical red, we're looking at it a little closer than if it's an up and down.
I do get what you're saying. There's a six point nine, we were ahead of the province, now we're only one five, we're only one two. It is showing a little, we're still close to the provincial. I don't think it's time to hit the pad. If you take a look at our six F L A and our nine as well, and if we were to go back and look at these, and this is what, you know, our high schools also look and do, is that we typically, you know, our students improve over time. They're grade six, we were able to look at this grade, this cohort and see what they did in grade nine. And that's what the high schools do, they go, oh, okay, it makes sense. We can sometimes predict where a class is going to fall out based on that, but we do see improvement and that's what we don't show. It would be a ton of work, but at the high school levels, they are watching cohorts of kids and looking at, you know, whether they're making improvement as well.
See, I just, for me, it's one point two. I mean, one of our kids did a very good student, but one point two, I guess, to me is not bad compared to a higher number. And then, you know, if you look at the other one, last other one, science thirty, you go from eight point five to three point one to six point four. So you went high or you went lower, then you went high and then you went back to work.
And what we see there is three years where we're low and that's where we're seeing, okay, like what's happening here? We've got one year in F L A where they dipped. So I think next year, when you get this report, if they went back out, I was like, oh, again, they're doing, it's second year, we're like, okay. And then, and then the year, because it is a moment in time and I can tell, I know that our high school teachers and their departments look at these things and they plan around these results. Thank you.
Trustee Bergstrom.
I was just going to comment and correct me if I'm wrong, but as I was looking through these results, I kind of came to that conclusion that the results are lower in grade nine, are lower in grade six, a little bit better in grade nine, and then the best kind of in grade twelve, just as the students maybe learn how to exam as well, how to take exams.
Yep, that's really what we see, some improvement come on over, right? And again, our grade six or wilds is going to be really skewed because of new crime films and things like that. And so it's hard to say. Again, I know that we're taking a look at data more and having our teachers set up lower grade levels, starting to look at more data than they haven't had data in the past, right? To take a look at. And so we're helping them understand how we could use it for.
trustee Waters.
How long does it take, we're bringing new curriculum, for us to actually look to see how we're, is it three, four years? I mean, obviously, there's going to be time to teach it, to implement it and so forth. So how long does it actually take before you can say, okay, now we can actually start using the data?
Well, I think, so Alberta Ed would say, like, they give it to us in sort of five-year chunks in perfect years when there's been no, you know, no COVID, no new curriculum, lack of exams, but we're, you know, we're going to enter into another cycle at our diplomas here when they're not writing in January. And suddenly it's hard to compare when you only have half your kids writing and things like that. So, you know, but they do provide sort of statistical analysis. Is this significantly different, the standard deviation from year to year? So it doesn't, you know, in my mind, we're looking at three years here, but, you know, I've never seen one where consistently we just get worse and worse and worse. We bottom out, like, we always see, okay, they start to pay attention to somewhere and something and make improvements on it. So I can't really answer you how many years we need.
A perfect year would be three.
Yeah, three to five years, but that doesn't mean we don't look this year. So again, when I, if we look at our grade six, we've got all fifty questions and all of the subjects mapped out. We know how Alberta, how Red Republican kids scored, what percentage they scored and where they scored the highest and where the province is. We know where they scored the lowest and, you know, what the province gets. So like I just met with my social coordinator yesterday, she said, oh, I knew, like, this is the worst. It was government, so the government was, it's the most boring. And where are we killing it? We're killing it on Uruguay and Athens. Really fun stuff to teach if kids get engaged, right? So go, so how do we now make this other one of these series of questions? That's what we have to have our teachers take a look at. So that's the level that.
Our trustees can help us out with that one.
Exactly. Yeah, we'll go ahead and have you speak, but that's how we try to, the test is sort of mapped out. It's mapped out the curriculum. Over time, if we see our results low in an area, then we're like, how are we teaching this? How are we assessing that? How can we improve how we're teaching it?
I have no other trustees on my speakers list, so we will accept.
Let Dan have a water.
We will accept the diploma exam achievement results report as information. Thank you very much. We will be going into the two ten point seven annual education result report. Do we want to take a quick bio break? Five-ish minutes?
Sure. Bottom line, sure.
We're going to have to start again, we stop it, there's no pause.
Everybody, the cameras still on?
Cameras are still on and if we stop or there is no pause function. Andrew, something worse.
Thank you.
Is it Festival of Trees, is that what, being more responsive, being more responsive to the.
We'll have a visit and see where we have enough lead time to problem solve it.
Chief of thought, if kids are in school, would not the K and E lane attendance?
It's the performances and that's what.
Well, it's a singing, you know, they go there to sing.
But there's lots of other ones besides the school.
If they're off, if they're off to new parent teaching conferences, then how do you get all the kids that are going to that, that are off to go to that?
You'd have to get more community groups to do it instead of school groups, yeah.
I think we'll start school.
Oh, really?
I think we have enough lead time to blab it out to.
And typically.
Their teacher, their teacher usually only work for one year.
And I think the portion, the portion case, our teacher can get us some kids for their hour, not that they're singing.
Well, typically, those teachers don't.
We get, how do you get the kids there, though? That's the reason why we're placed there on the. Well, there's a will, there's a way, if there was any questions.
We're here for Jason. I saw that.
Yeah.
That's a great perspective, Ryan.
Well, it's a huge aspect of the.
Well, I know it's brought up by the one school.
Could we move it or?
It, it, it just.
I had that oddly, like, I thought it was intuitive even, but I didn't know about the. Home on the last week, I don't know. That's too bad. I don't know, it ends in a N, it's one. Especially if you're going to be here, you feel like that's a parent, kind of like, okay, this is, this is how it is this year. And, yeah. So rather have it there than, you know, it has.
I know that now, but thanks for your support, I appreciate it, Rod. Yeah.
That awkward silence is still being recorded.
We need the video that was.
This is the time where you wave at the fans at home. And like.
Come on, chat, wave. Come on, Dan. So I'm not even used to it yet. I know, I feel you, I leave little fingerprints.
All right, we have everyone back. We will resume at ten point seven, annual education results report. This was not in your agenda, but handed out to trustees.
Yeah, sorry.
Was Rod just giving a.
Well, I just got a text from one of my fans at home, so.
You have fans?
Well, she's actually in this building, so.
Oh, she's checking up on you.
Oh, I'm good, I'm good. I think, so you have a new document and there was one in the package, but Andy left a brand new document. This one represents a slate of most updated information, so it is the latest version of the annual education results report. And just as a sort of a purpose to my presentation, this year's education or annual education vote for one of the most, I'm about to say that convenience is the wrong word I'm looking for, but because the measures in our report actually aligned with the outcomes and the pillars that we were using in our education plan, the data that you'll see as you're going through the pages actually are matched to, again, the Alberta education domains, which we switched to for education plan last year for the first time. It made everything flow very, very sequentially for someone like me. That was excellent, whereas again, years past, our pillars didn't align with Alberta education's sort of goals or priorities. So we had data, for example, we had like literacy and numeracy, our math and language arts results in a different section of our E E R than our social studies and science results, like you're completely separated. Whereas now, when we're talking about student growth and achievement, all of our student growth and achievement from kindergarten to grade twelve is in one section. So when you're looking at the results, it, I think it follows, it just makes a little bit more sense if you're, you're seeing, did we actually meet the targets that we set in our education plan the year before? So I'm not going to go section by section, because a lot of the actual results that are, that are in the report, we have actually spent some time talking about. Remember back in September, back in September, we went through our division satisfaction survey results for twenty-four, twenty-five, and we also went through our Alberta education assurance measure survey results. Obviously, those results are in the document and I will highlight them in a moment, but we did, we spent forty-five minutes going through them, so I don't think we need to do that in a second, forty-five minutes. And again, listening to Derek, you said, Dan Lauer's analysis on the grade six and nine paths and the diploma exam, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail there, other to say, just to echo what he said, the results that you see in my report or the A D R are for the total cohort. So it actually looks better than the results that Mr. Lauer was talking about, because statistically, what happens is because so many of our kids are writing, Dan mentioned this, when the other, in the other jurisdictions, they have so many zeros assigned to them, because say, like, on say, only eighty-five percent of their students are participating in a grade nine provincial achievement test, those missing students are, get zeros, it really lowers their mark. So comparatively speaking, because we encourage so many of our students to write our provincial achievement test in grade six and grade nine, when we compare to the provincial average on the total cohort, using grade nine as an example, we are above the provincial average in every core subject. So that was extremely positive. And similarly, in grade six, even though like the, when you look at the overall results, they all look great, we are a little bit closer to provincial average when we look at the total cohort compared to just those that wrote. But all the analysis that Dan's group included is repeated in the actual analysis part of the E E R. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through it, but I do want to highlight some things that you might not have noticed specifically in the report. And that's talking about our First Nations, M T, M E W learners. And I have mentioned this before, because I, later on in the school year, we do our report with Terry and Haley. And for the tenth year in a row, our results for our First Nations and M T students are significantly higher than the cohort, the same cohort in the province. Once again, our three-year high school completion rate, sixty-six percent versus fifty-nine percent eventually. And again, this is just the cohort, First Nations, M T cohort, M E W cohort, but again, like seven full percent higher than provincial average. And our five-year high school completion rate is similar, seventy-seven percent compared to only sixty-nine percent for the total cohort of the province. So again, just, it just highlights the amount of work that not just our schools do, but also Terry Haley doing, helping build for basketball, our teachers, which then then trickles down to the classroom. Similarly, when I talk about our provincial achievement tests, nine percent higher at our grade nine provincial achievement test in our First Nations, M T, M E W learners compared to the province. And similarly, at all, when we look at our diploma exams, eighty-one percent acceptable compared to seventy-seven point five percent at the province. So again, just, we still have work to do and I've mentioned that in previous reports. And when we each, I think it's in February, we do our standalone First Nations and M T and U W learning services report. We still say, we're still below the cohorts. Our First Nations students and our M T students are still behind the general cohort. So we have work to do. And our trend over the past ten years is the gap is closing. Every year, our gap is closing. So we're extremely happy about that. And in terms of our satisfaction, I also wanted to highlight, again, we'll mention this in September, just to highlight again, if you want to, I think there's like thirty different questions in the parent Alberta education assurance survey, but one of them just comes right out of math. What is your, your feeling towards the basic overall quality of education in Red Republican schools? Ninety, our cohort, ninety percent, ninety point one percent felt strongly that the overall quality of basic education in Red Republican is positive compared to eighty-seven percent in the province. So again, just, you know, very, very positive. When you look at our, the actual, like, there's, you call it a report card and it's the colored charts on the A D R R. We have colored chart for the overall summary, one for our First Nations, M T, M E W learners and one for English as additional language learners. When we look at our, at those, we talked about, you know, trying to avoid the fall colors, red and orange and yellow. We certainly have to yell, which is sort of intermediate. But when you look at our greens and blues, either high, very high, blue significantly, it is, like, I've been looking at the, the A D R R, the other plan since two thousand and fifteen. This is our best in ten years. It is, it's the true testament to the work that's gone on at all levels of the school division. And when you look section by section, again, I'm not going to go in details, hopefully I just look at the copy that was in it, because there is the analysis, again, the ability to do an analysis and whether it's the learning services, our student services folks, our First Nations, M T, M E W folks, that contributed to the analysis portion of all the narrative that you see at the end of the quantitative data and our qualitative data. Wherever we have a concern or a sort of an intermediate area, there are specific strategies that are either going to be put in place or have been put in place this year already, but we knew the results were coming sort of before we, our release. So again, just, and there was so much information already, I don't need, I said, I did share some highlights that I thought were important. And I also, sort of, there's a few more highlights that I wanted to share as well. When we look at some of those results in each of those areas in those analysis for satisfaction, our division sign increases over one percent in twelve out of twelve Alberta education measures. That's, so compared to our own year-over-year satisfaction. And in, according to our base of the province, twelve out of twelve areas, we're better than the province. So just incredible results. And similarly, when we look at the individual categories, because students are asked in grades four, seven, nine and eleven, all parents are asked and all teacher and teaching staff, so the kids staff are asked. When you look at every single category, we were above last year's results in thirty-one out of thirty-three categories and better than the provincial average in thirty out of thirty-three categories. So again, to wrap it up into a goal, our results from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So again, uh, this, to wrap it up into a goal, um, uh, our, our results from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year works were extremely strong. Um, you know, from kindergarten to grade twelve, um, we have a fantastic education system. Um, you know, I, I've been visiting my, my, my liaison schools the past two weeks, so I've met with all five of them. And those, these results obviously come from the schools, right? So it all rolls up. Um, all my schools, you know, I, I met with, I, Central, Eastview, Glendale, um, West Park Elementary School, uh, and moved to the server yesterday. Um, all those conversations are very similar, just, you know, first of all, thanking them for all the work they do and asking them, you know, how do you see this and, you know, how do you go forward from here? Because when you're at ninety percent, how do you improve? Uh, and far and not, all of our administrators were saying, um, we've got strategies, we have our school plan in place, you know, we're, we're still moving forward. So I think it's certainly a testament from superintendent all the way down to the amount of work that's going into this report. So with that, I will just open it up for any questions.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, so Ron's too uh, modest to say anything, but uh, through we've been working with Alberta education, and he submitted a draft copy to them around our work in the First Nations, MTT, Inuit area. He's been asked if we could use this as an exemplar for the province, so well done, Ron, and all of that hard work goes into it, and thanks to you and your team.
And I will open the floor to trustees at this time, and I just want to make notes, because we have had a trustee leave, um, that trustee Bill Stride was not feeling well, um, and will not be here for the remainder of the meeting. So, um, we do know the illness is prevalent and going around uh, right now, so hopefully he feels better because he was not looking good while that progressed. So, um, at this time, I have Betsy McCauley on my speakers list.
Thank you. Um, as Superintendent Erickson said, well done, well done, well done. Um, I know you're just the messenger, but still, well done for everything that you've messaged to us, especially after the reports would not come down. You know, this just makes me feel so much better. We're doing so, I'm achieving, yeah. But, but it does go hand in hand, saying, you know, one's one kind of what the left hand's doing, this is what the right hand is doing, and when they come together, you know? So at this time, I would also like to move that the trustees approve the proposed annual education results report for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And please say thank you and congratulations to everyone that assisted you on this as well.
Well done, I will.
Thank you very much. We have motion on the floor. I have on my speakers list trustee Davies and Cardi Zierat. Trustee Davies, ma'am.
Um, the educational insurance measures, um, I feel like there's a, there's a missing graph or a missing chart on here. Um, I'm curious to know what our overall results look like. What do they look like?
So, those results, they, they don't, I understand, you want like an overall result with not including our English as additional language students. And those results, we don't have, we don't have a mechanism to, to do that ourselves. Um, they disaggregate our EAL and our MY data at the, at the Alberta education level and provide us with the, the broken out data. Uh, in order for us to do that, I, I don't even know, we can do it mathematically, because we'd have to go through each of the individual categories. And, well, in fact, we don't even know, because for the satisfaction surveys, we don't know if the first, if, like, for the total cohort, how many, what, what the N was for the EAL families, for example. So we wouldn't be able to do it overall without that cohort.
I think trustee Davies is looking more for the P A to pull that.
Right. The, all the numbers that we, we pulled out, the three-year highest school completion, right? And the F N M I and the N L summaries, um, I am curious to know what the number is with those two numbers removed.
Yeah, we wouldn't have that information. Like, I could tell you for what our three and five year is with the all students, with just our First Nations, MTT Inuit students and just our English as additional language students, but I don't, there is no way to get the data of what it would be of our students that aren't First Nations, MTT, or um, English as additional language. We don't have a way to pull that out and have everybody else's results.
So we'd have to get that number from the Alberta education.
I, I, I would, I have a sense they would provide us with that information, but I can certainly ask.
Thank you.
So, all right, just, um, I, I guess, looking at, if we, the way that we break it up, we focus on our First Nations, MTT uh, or how we work with our identified English as additional language. I think the thought is that if we help move them up, we'll get closer too, but we really labor intensive, we might be able to pull our own data, but we couldn't compare it to anything, because we don't have the provinces. The province only supplies it in this way, which includes all the learners rolled up into one, right? So I think the way these are designed to be is like, okay, if this is where, you know, we're at with our identified English as additional language learners, what are we going to do with them and help, you know, improve them, which would then help overall that whole cohort? You know what I'm saying? It's, we, we could live for ourselves, but what could that get us?
Well, thank you. Quick follow-up, that, that's um, sort of shows where we need to get these groups to. Right? Because that would give you, obviously the numbers are, are lower, and they're, they're pulling them down, the overall numbers. But we don't know where, where we should be at, at that point, in terms of percentages, because we have those other numbers in.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I, I, I don't believe those, those statistics would be available. I, I certainly can ask, I, I don't, I don't believe those numbers would be forthcoming, however.
Especially to have a provincial comparison.
Because when we get the data, it doesn't break it out to, here's the student with this code, and then that's how we identify, you know? Yeah, I don't know if, but we can, we can ask.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else on my speakers list right now, but I do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Thank you very much.
We posted later today.
Uh, ten point eight quarterly financial report, hope to fair treasure, Colin Darny.
Does have an interesting one, so normally in the first quarter, there's not a whole lot to report, because we've been spending most of the first three months kind of adjusting to the new students or these students that are all first of kind of thirtieth through the count and has some school budgets. And so then we kind of take off from that point or whatever, but this year obviously was unique and different, so still trying to iron out exactly what it looks like, but uh, at November thirtieth, I guess we are presenting it, I guess, with the uh, numbers that there was a strike uh, that resulted in um, salaries not being paid during the month of October. So that obviously gave us a lower reported than anticipated expense for salaries and what we had adjusted for. Um, and then obviously, and what happens with this, and I have actually received these numbers that they're going to do is decline that one two hundred of uh, the salaries uh, that would be reported. Uh, that's going to happen sometime in September, February, or sorry, January, February. Um, so wait, I don't actually know those numbers, they'll be sending it to me to review and to confirm if we agree with those numbers. So what's being kind of presented, I guess, is what the estimated numbers would look like. The, of course, then there was a, um, adjustments for the twenty-four, twenty-five year and the twenty-five, twenty-six year for the salary settlement. So that was uh, just kind of confirmed yesterday, so it's not being reported in these numbers. And they would be adjusted and recorded in the uh, second quarter, when I present that, I believe in March. Um, so besides that, everything else is kind of as planned per budget, so. Uh, and then I did just kind of list today, I always do this, so whenever we have received any funding outside of the, the funding manual, so this listed the influence in support and service funding, and then the um, dual credit funding, so that's the only two. Sometimes there's uh, more than that, so I would say that I guess, I believe that I'm happy to report they've built some of these off-funding um, portions that they give us after the fact, uh, they built it into the funding manuals. Hopefully that's kind of the trend, that there's no surprise funding pockets that we receive throughout the year. They will start to actually report them and confirm them in the spring instead of throughout the school year, so I guess happy to report that. But um, based on kind of what I know or whatever, it's, once we kind of settle out all of the retro pays and the retro payments of funding and, and all that or whatever, I'd say it's kind of business as usual and kind of on target for what we plan for the budget, so.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will open the floor to trustees for any questions. Trustee Summers, I have just kind of an odd side question. I've been reading it, but um, do the, with the Public Interest Disclosure Act, do the charter and, and private slash independent schools, do they have the same, do they have the same responsibilities with this act as, as public?
I'll open that.
Section thirty-two of the public interest requires a school through, is it the annual report to school or something? Yeah. Um, is it the will of the board to receive that information? Show of hands. I would think it would be over the margin. Any other questions for the first quarter financial statement? We will accept the first quarter financial statement as information. Thank you so very much, Colin. Moving along in our agenda to ten point nine P S B A report, trustee Summers.
Try to read this fast, because. Um, at a recent P S B A Fall Gathering, Tom Thompson invited us to, into a different way of thinking about governance, not as a checklist, but as a kind of stewardship, stewardship flight. He began with a simple belief, when governance is done well, it becomes a competitive advantage. Strong boards aren't accidental, they're diverse, they're informed, they keep learning, and most importantly, they keep, they listen to their publics. And he was specific about saying "publics." Um, Tom reminded us of something easy to forget in the day-to-day, what is a trustee? A trustee is diligent, prepared, guided by conscience, someone who chooses to do the right thing, even when it's hard. He quoted Steve Jobs, "Think big, build simple, and act now." He told us that these days, as trustees, we are very much building the plane while flying it, so acting now matters. He described three modes of governing, the fiduciary, where we take care with public trust, the strategic, where we set direction, and the generative, where we look ahead and see around corners and spot opportunities before anyone else. And then he warned of what happens when boards lose their way, arrogance, self-interest, and pre- pre- I can't say the word, the opposite of stewardship. To illustrate how organizations rethink themselves, he pointed to two unlikely teachers, Moneyball, a book about questioning tradition through data, creativity, and asking why not? And Netflix, a company that has survived because it evolved fast, lets go of old ideas, analyzes what people actually need, and values people over process. Tom challenged us with a simple question, if you weren't doing what you've always done, what would you be doing differently? He encouraged us to build a culture where people feel safe asking that question, a culture that goes upstream, thinks globally, and keeps learning. It reminded us of our mission, critical roles. We define a vision, we set a broad policy that survives beyond any one of us, we provide a strategic leadership. Policies, he said, are our legacy, they should be simple, clear, and treated like law. He shared some core principles too, focus on vision, speak with one voice, prioritize board development. And then he gave us an unexpected example, the Orpheus Chamber Orchestra. They play, they play with no conductor, rotating leadership constantly. They work only because they park their egos, speak honestly, listen deeply, and trust each other. Finally, he suggests the kinds of committees that support good governance are three that he suggested were our governance and H R, audit, and business and strategic planning. Tom ended where he began with stewardship. He pushed us to stay curious, stay humble, stay ready to evolve, because one new idea will always come on board, and at least two old ones should be swept out. That was our PD, and the other, we have new, um, where are our? We have new, oh, I don't know where I put that. We have a new president on P S V C, which is Lorraine Stewart. Um, Pat, I can't say Pat's last name, do you, can you say?
Grissom.
Grissom, yeah, he is the vice president. And we have one more new, um, Donna Cook is a new um, second vice president.
Thank you very much. I will open the floor to trustees at this time. Is there any question on the P S B A report? Seeing none, we will accept that as information. Thank you so very much, trustee Summers. We'll move on to ten point ten, trustee community engagement report. In your agenda, you will see in front of you the um, events that trustees participated in. Are there any additions, changes, errors that need to be made? Seeing none, we will move on. I just actually want to check something. See if there is one thing that. Bye.
I, I was able to attend one of the five eighty Fall of the Province. And numerous basketball. Too busy.
Okay, I have now, yeah. Um, would you like that added to the community engagement report? Um, can that please be added? Thank you very much, and we will accept that report as information if there are any questions. Thank you. Ten point eleven, classroom complexity engagement plan overview, superintendent Erickson.
Yeah, so in the November board meeting, you were fortunate to hear a presentation from Matty Dietrich and Aaron Black regarding their training in public participation and engagement. And they are going to put that newly minted skill to work as we do engagement on classroom complexity engagement across our divisions. So there's been much talk around complexity, obviously, we've provided reporting to the ministry on class size and complexity across Red Deer Public. And regardless of what's happening provincially, we've made a commitment to our staff uh, that we will have a conversation and engage with them around class size and complexity at Red Deer Public. So as you can see in the timeline, we have the purpose, the scope, and sorry, the timeline of what that engagement is going to look like, and we have a number of dates already put into our calendars uh, that has us going around to a variety of schools, speaking with students, we have a few parent nights, teacher voice groups, uh, classified staff group, and uh, throughout those three months. Uh, and then you as a board will receive a final report, uh, March twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh at the board uh, retreat, and then we'll also communicate out with our public after with a you said, we heard, we did kind of framework. So just to close that loop at that time.
Will the trustees be going to any of your schools and?
Yeah, the trustees, I would say, welcome to come to your liaison school, uh, when we're meeting with the students. So we'll have that printed in your calendar for acceptance of that. Um, I think we want to keep it to, to the liaison trustee, just so that we have the kids, they're more open to speak if there's not as many adults around, and then of course, I would like you to teach your voice. Uh, we're going to start it off with our admin group in January, and then we'll have citywide and some parent nights that we'd obviously have our trustees at as well, so we'll put out the invitations for as many of those as we can.
I will open the floor to any other trustees that have questions.
Just have a comment that's very reassuring when I hear this, and you're always ahead of the fall, and so you're always ahead of like the province or any other division that I hear of with, with, you know, trying to figure out who we have in our buildings and how to best serve them.
I appreciate that. We, we, we need to know if what we do as a rapporteur that this board supports is actually making a difference. is actually making a difference to our teachers. And so this will give them the opportunity to tell us.
Trustee Berdman.
Yeah, I would second that. I think it's just speaks volumes that we don't have any questions. This is excellent. Thank you.
If you need hours, Matty and Aaron sat outside my office.
Many more to trustee Waters.
So you're thinking of, well, if you say trustees, we'll go as far as the students. I go, what meeting staff and all that? I mean, in liaison schools and doing it all in.
We're going to do a survey as well for, for teachers. So it's not just going to be, we'll have a teacher voice group and then a survey for our staff. And they'll be able to fill in that just, we don't have time. We get out to every school to talk to all staff. So we have another, another way for them to provide feedback to us.
Can you make us stop quickly? We are meeting with the Educational Assistance Group specifically. I will add, having participated in community engagement in the past, when we had several trustees attend the student portion of that, sometimes it was very overwhelming for our students when there was more trustees than, like, we outnumbered them. So I think what has been said and the direction that we should go and be cognizant of is you go to your trustee liaison schools. If you can't, then maybe send someone or trade off if there's dates that work and don't work. This way, we don't have a bunch of trustees going to student engagements because it's important to get the good information.
Aaron, do we have a total number that we're doing?
I think we have eight schools.
Oh, overall engagements. 15 or 14?
Yes, I'd say 12 to 14.
And then an online survey as well for. Teacher voice would be interesting. We did it to an extent last year. I think this will just refine it a little bit more.
Perfect, thank you. We will accept that as information. Moving on to 10.12 Superintendent Erickson.
Yeah, all activities for the month are there. It was a very busy month with ASBA, PSBA, and then seven half days with all of you going around and celebrating our long service recognition, which is always great to go and celebrate our staff across the division that have hit the 10, 15, 20, all the way up to 45 years was our highest this year. And we had two individuals get the 45 year recognition. So exceptional time and always good to go around at schools.
Your honor, trustee Waters.
I'll be meeting both December night with Red Deer Emergency Services. For last one.
Oh, that one was last night. It was going to be, it happened. So it was already in the, already in the agenda before it happened. It will be rescheduled.
Do we find out, I'm sorry, I think somebody asked last time, do we find out anything from the city hall about how they handled our elections?
We'll discuss that in private.
Okay.
We had agreed up at the board. Anyways. If there's nothing else for the superintendent, we will accept that as information. Moving on to 10.13 Board Chair Report. I do not have anything. The zone four board chair meeting happened after agenda review this past Monday. Discuss several, several things. One of the factors or conversations was around the complexity in the classroom. And if it is possible to find out numbers, percentage of budget that's being spent on things outside of education. And is the responsibility of other ministries, for example, like health? So I know our school division has done that. But other school divisions are also looking at that right now. The other seven in our zone four. Any questions? Moving on to 10.14 Correspondence in your agenda package, you will see a letter that was sent to the mayor and city council. This was discussed at our last meeting to express concerns regarding the proposed development application. Any questions regarding the correspondence? Seeing none, we will move on to celebrations. And I can't remember how I said I was going to do it differently and I can't remember how I said I was going to do it. We changed the CD too. I need to do. I'll go to my lap tingles too.
Sure. I know it's been mentioned a few times, but I just want to say, I want to celebrate this new board's first four or five days in Edmonton at the ASBA and PSBA Fall General Meetings. And I was, I've always been proud to be part of Red Deer Public, but gosh darn, it was so great. Get up three new ones there and ask the questions and be engaged and show them a little bit more on what there is to do as a trustee that's outside of the city limits. So and a big congratulations to the new executive that is on both of those organizations. They've got some big shoes to fill and they've got some hard work ahead of them. So that's my celebration.
Thank you very much. Trustee Davies.
I, I want to make everything about sports. Been watching a lot of sports lately. I think, I don't know if I can do this. It's not my school, but congratulations, so is the server. I'm sure that'll come up later. I watched a high school kid hit a wall harder than I've ever seen a high school kid hit volleyball before. So that was great. Our basketball seasons are underway. Got a chance to go see a couple of them and we've got some good teams there as well, all levels. And then just to, to the two, the two conferences, we went to the two meetings and stuff. Great, it's, it was a wonderful time to connect with, with people from all over the province.
Thank you very much. Trustee Waters.
Ended a couple of school council meetings and parents are really energetic. They're looking for different ways of how they can fundraise because they've got all these wonderful plans. So it's, it's great to see it. They also try to find different ways of how to get more people involved. So hopefully they can succeed in everything.
Thank you, Colin.
Oh, pass. I can't.
I brought the R and financial statements.
I was just going to say.
Yeah, that makes probably what I, I celebrate things that. Yeah, quick, yeah. I'd like to celebrate the board.
With a clean, audited report. Thank you very much, Colin. I'm just going to say audited financial statements now, not pass.
I want to celebrate the students that came today that you guys got to see as well. I just think.
That was mine.
Oh, sorry. We don't get that at central office. So we don't, we don't go to the Christmas concerts and things. So I think it was wonderful that they came here and paid off to Teresa and Bernie.
Harlors.
I would like to celebrate Mountview Elementary's Christmas concert. It was fabulous. It was exactly the right amount of time. An hour.
I would celebrate Emile Gies's Christmas concert. It was absolutely adorable. And the participation from all levels of staff. The principal was dressed up as a reindeer running across the stage and getting laughs from everyone. And I have got to commend those great vibes who were speaking better, better public speaking than I could do in an auditorium like that. It was so impressive. So hats off to all those great vibes. They were incredible.
Thank you very much. trustee Dan Mar.
I'm going to sort of riff off of Nathan's celebration. But I want to celebrate the actual, the committee that put on the provincial championships. We've got, and he was the chair of that. But it's, you know, tons and tons of volunteers, pulling in community volunteers, students there through the weekend. And it really takes a whole lot of cooperation to pull off those. They did so in a spectacular fashion. And I know that in January, you'll get to congratulate the kids yourself and those coaches that do that. But it could have happened if our staff was still up and doing the work in Red Deer.
Superintendent Erickson.
I mentioned it earlier, hard not to recognize all of our long service staff members across the division. And always great to go and see them and congratulate them on their years of service.
Thank you very much. I would like to celebrate all of our staff and students and families as we go into the Christmas holidays. And I hope that everyone has a much needed rest with friends and family. And stay as warm because it may be getting cold in the next little bit as forecasted. So thank you so very much. And at this time, I would look for a motion to go back into private. Thank you so very much, trustee Waters. All those in favor? Karen. 406.
I love going to West Park Mall too and getting a full tour. That was awesome. Full tour.